Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for our regular meeting July 29, 2025. Mister, I would like to call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Mister Town Clerk, could you please do a roll call?
Mayor James. Councilman Guttenberg. Councilman McCormick.
Here.
Councilman Sampson.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you very much. Would you all please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
Like we did to the United States of America, in the true republic of the true states, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. First item on our agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to accept the meeting agenda as presented for tonight.
Much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, if you are in favor, please indicate by saying aye. If not, nay. Mister Town Clerk, could you please do a roll call?
Councilman Guttenberg.
Aye.
Councilman McCormick. Councilman Sampson.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor James. The motion passes.
Next on our agenda is a consent agenda. Oh, sorry. Disclosure of closed station of a closed session on July 1st. In accordance with the Maryland Open Meetings Act, provision, Article 3-211, we are required to include specific information in the meetings when a public body meets in closed session to ensure full compliance. We have attached the written statement, which includes the reason for the closed meeting, dispatchatory authority permitting the closed session, a list of the, a listing of the topics discussed, the individuals present, and the action taken. This document has been made part of the public record to maintain transparency and meet the legal requirements of the Open Meetings Act. Next on the agenda is a consent agenda. The consent agenda is designed to approve projects in a single motion that while very important, do not require counsel or staff discussion. With that said, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda today?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the items listed for the consent agenda for the July 29th meeting.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If you are in favor of approving the consent adjust agenda per the motion made, please indicate by saying aye. If not, nay. Mister Town Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Councilman Guttenberg.
Aye.
Councilman McCormick.
Aye.
Councilman Sampson.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor James.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you very much. And Mister Town Clerk, I am looking for a proclamation. Would you happen to have one hiding? Because next on our agenda is farmer's market. I can't. Jenny here. Thank you. So coming up, I got it. Thank you. So August 3rd to August 9th is Farmer's Market Week. If you have not taken the time to go to our farmer's market on Wednesdays and Saturdays, you are missing out. Saturday is extremely busy. Wednesday's a little low key. They go until Labor Day on Wednesdays, and then it will be until right around Thanksgiving. Shop Small Saturday will be their last one. So I would love to read the proclamation, recognizing Farmer's Market Week. Whereas Southern Maryland farmers and ranchers provide citizens with access to healthful, locally and regionally produced foods through farmer markets, which are expanding and evolving to accommodate the demand for diverse array of agricultural products. And whereas farmer's markets and other agricultural direct marketing outlets provide infrastructure to assist in the distribution of farm and value-added products, thereby contributing approximately $9 billion each year to the US economy. And whereas farmer's markets serve as a significant outlets by which many small to medium, new and beginning, and veteran and agricultural producers market agricultural products, generating revenue that supports the sustainability of family farms and the revitalization of rural communities nationwide. And whereas the town of La Plata recognizes the importance of expanding agricultural marketing opportunities that assist and encourage the next generation of farmers and ranchers, generate farm income to help stimulate business development and job creation, build community connections through rural and urban linkages, and whereas the farm, La Plata Farmer's Market provides a marketplace dedicated to the sale of local and regional agricultural products, home baked foods, and handcrafted items promotes and supports the region's agricultural heritage and independent small businesses, and serves as a foundation for building partnerships among farmers, agriculturists, consumers, and the business community. And whereas the La Plata Farmer's Market has been recognized as a regional hub, offering products from a broad range of local growers, producers, and creators, providing and welcoming diverse populations, the opportunity to enjoy these products, and supporting local tourism and economic development. Now, the, therefore, we, the council of the town of La Plata, to further awareness of farmer markets' contributions to our citizens' everyday life and to our local economy, do hereby proclaim the week of August 3rd to August 9th, 2025, as Farmer's Market Week in the town of La Plata in conjunction with the observation of National Farmer's Market Week. And this is, this will be signed by the entire council. The mayor, Janine A. James, councilman Paul Guttenberg, councilman Patrick McCormick, councilman Gregory Sampson, and councilman Peijon Johnson. And what is amazing, I don't know how long you all have been here, but to see where this farmer's market has started off as just a little nugget and has really blossomed. And we have people from all over the county and from neighboring counties come to our farmer's market. So we are quite proud of that. And I encourage you to help celebrate Farmer's Market Week the first week of August. All right. Now matters of information. The first on the agenda, and I'm going to toss this right to you, Mister Stevens, is the wastewater treatment plant update.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I am Chuck Stevens. I'm the town manager for the town of La Plata. I'm going to give you your staff report on this topic this evening. So for background, as you all know, the town of La Plata operates a wastewater treatment plant with a current permitted capacity of 1.5 million gallons per day. The facility has been in operation for multiple years and currently averages approximately 1.22 million gallons per day in daily flow, operating at approximately 80% permitted capacity. Between 2020 and 2025, the Maryland Department of the Environment, or MDE, documented various compliance issues at the facility, including discharge exceedances and sanitary sewer overflow events. In April 2025, the town contracted with CDM Smith, an environmental consulting firm, to conduct a comprehensive technical assessment of plant operation and compliance challenges. The purpose of this presentation this evening is to provide counsel and the public with a factual overview of the current compliance status, the technical factors contributing to past violations, and the collaborative efforts underway to achieve sustained compliance. So let's begin with our current compliance status, present operations. Just to be clear, the town is currently meeting our permit requirements for all for all parameters as of this report date. And I think that's important. We have had some past violations, but we've also been working very hard. And as of this report date, we are meeting our permit requirements. It's also essential to note that the wastewater treatment plant's operations have no impact on the town's drinking water source, and therefore, drinking water is not affected by the compliance violations of the wastewater treatment plant. The historical violations that we're discussing this evening, MDE has documented violations occurring between 2020 and 2025, including discharge exceedances per parameters such as copper, ammonia nitrogen, and total suspended solids, sanitary sewer overflow events within the collection system, and coliform exceedances related to disinfection system performance. The town maintains ongoing coordination with MDE staff to address these historical violations and implement corrective measures. As I already mentioned, we brought in CDM Smith to perform a technical analysis. The CDM Smith assessment identified three primary technical factors contributing to past compliance challenges. The first, excessive inflow during heavy rainfall. Peak flows have reached 2.98 million gallons during significant rain events, nearly double the plant's rated capacity. The 1.5 million gallon per day equalization tank constructed in 2021 currently operates manually, limiting its effectiveness during extreme high flows. However, quick update on that. I just received information before this meeting that the repairs to that tank were affected yesterday, and that tank is now fully back in automatic operation. So that's a big check in the box for the town. We've been working on that for a while. We're glad that that's operating. We'll watch that over the next week or so to make sure that it continues to operate as it is supposed to do. But as the time of writing this report, when I said it currently operates manually versus what I'm reporting to you right now, that has changed. That was repaired yesterday. These high flow conditions correlate with most discharge exceedances. Number two, plant configuration changes. Module one was offline from January 2023 to March 2024 for conversion to a new treatment process, resulting in a temporary 25% capacity reduction. Pilot testing of the new process required taking other modules offline intermittently, complicated operations. And the number three, infrastructure aging. Manual operation of the equalization tank due to valve hardware issues, which, as I stated, have been resolved as of yesterday. Tertiary clarifier design limitations affecting settling performance, significant aging of Model 2 infrastructure, and frequent UV disinfection system bold failures contributing to coliform exceedances. I think it's important that council realizes that we're not going alone in this effort to come back into compliance. We are partnering with the Maryland Environmental Service. We maintain a collaborative partnership with Maryland Environmental Service, or MES. They are a state entity established in 1970, and they provide onsite operational support and specialized environmental compliance services, contributing multidisciplinary expertise to address complex operational challenges. The fiscal impact. To date, we have consultant costs. CDM Smith was brought on. They were contracted in April 2025 for an amount not to exceed $20,000, with current expenditures totaling approximately $15,862.50. Anticipated penalties. Precise cost of anticipated fines remains undetermined. The town is collaborating with MDE to minimize monetary penalties, allowing available funds to be directed towards necessary facility improvements. Capital improvements. The detailed cost estimates for achieving sustained compliance are currently under development based on the CDM Smith findings. Our funding strategy. The town plans to utilize the major facility fee funds specifically designated for wastewater treatment plant capacity expansion and compliance measures to finance required improvements. No impact on utility rates or taxes is anticipated at this time due to this issue. And I just want to be clear here. I am not saying that taxes or sewage fees will never go up. What we're saying is that we plan to address these compliance issues using the major facility fee funds, so taxes and fees will not rise as a result of this issue. Our alignment with the, with the town's strategic plan. This initiative directly supports the town's infrastructure maintenance and environmental stewardship responsibilities. Achieving sustained wastewater treatment plant compliance aligns with long-term community development goals and regulatory obligations essential for continued growth. Specifically, the town stated goal of public service readiness, direct staff to plan and develop the systems and infrastructure needed to meet growing demand while supporting the health, safety, and wellness of residents and natural resources. Sustainability considerations. Wastewater treatment plant compliance supports environmental sustainability by protecting local water resources and public health. The plan improvements will enhance operational efficiency and reduce environmental impact through improved treatment processes. These efforts align with the town's vision, which is the town of La Plata is an inclusive model of local government for community safety, health, amenities, and financial stability that benefits all residents for generations to come. Some specific administrative measures that the town has already taken or will be undertaking. Staffing, our current staffing levels, including three new operators hired in June of 2025, are considered adequate for compliance management during normal operations. Our procedures, internal reporting procedures, were reviewed and enhanced in April 2025 in coordination with MDE to ensure timely notification of any compliance issues. Training. Our plant operator training and standard operating procedures have been updated to enhance operational effectiveness. Monitoring. The facility SCADA system provides continuous monitoring with automatic alarm systems and initiate immediate operator response protocols. It's also important to note that our plant operator has access to the SCADA systems even when he's not at the plant. So if the plant looks like nobody's there, it doesn't mean that we're not monitoring it. Regulatory status, consent order. Senior town management is actively coordinating with MDE developed terms for a consent order. The full consent order will be made publicly available once completed. Documentation. The town has consistently cooperated with MDE and provided all requested documentation, including technical reports and operational data. The compliance timeline, the specific compliance, uh, specific compliance requirements and milestones will be established within the forthcoming consent order. Development implications. The current capacity, the wastewater treatment plant is operating at approximately 80% of its 1.5 million gallons per day permitted capacity. Expansion plans. The town is undertaking phased upgrades to increase plant capacity to 2 million gallons per day with future plans to reach 2.5 million gallons per day to accommodate projected growth. MDE has approved the town's plans to expand the wastewater treatment plant capacity to 2 million gallons per day upon completion of the programmed infrastructure improvements. There are no specific ADA considerations to consider for this presentation I'm giving you this evening. And then finally, I just want to let the council know that we recently received a notice as required by the Clean Water Act from the Potomac River Keepers Organization about potential action related to the wastewater treatment plant issue. We're evaluating the situation and we'll, we'll report more to the council as we can. So the recommended action for you this evening is staff recommends that the town council receive this informational presentation regarding the wastewater treatment plant compliance status and authorize continued coordination with MDE and consulting professionals to achieve sustained compliance and implement necessary facility improvements. And then finally, because transparency is, is one of the core values of, of the town and something that we all strive to achieve, I just want to let council know that we have published on our website. We published the MBE violation letters and notifications that the town received. We have, um, the technical memo from CDM Smith was part of your packet. We'll also put that on the website. We have frequently asked questions in case members of the public just want to go to the website and find out more, that's available to them and, and the public statement that we released last Thursday. So we also released a public statement, as you're aware, last Thursday, alerting the public of the violations and that this meeting was occurring this evening. That's the staff presentation that I have for you. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for a very thorough report and diving into this. And I love the transparency and putting it out there so people can understand it. There's a lot of information to dive into, and it is now provided to all the public. So you did a very nice job. Thank you very much. Um, council, I will open up the floor. If you have any questions for Mister Stevens. Go ahead, Councilman McCormick.
Yeah, Mister Stevens, I just want to echo. Thank you for the transparency here. I know we've talked a lot about this. The email, a couple of questions I already asked you, that the residents asked, I just want to make sure I get on the record here. So first, I think the biggest question a lot of residents are currently asking is, is there any risk to our wastewater treatment plant being permitted, not being permitted because of this?
I'm not aware of any, any risks to the permit at this time.
Excellent. Thank you for that. So we talk a lot about capacity here. 1.2 million gallons of water per day roughly is where we kind of average. 1.5 million is kind of what we're, I guess, certified for, for lack of a better term. Don't, don't quote me on the term. Putting us at about 80% capacity. We talk about projected growth. There's a plan to get to 2 million and then 2.5 billion gallons per day. My first question, you may not know this, being the new town manager. Who and who approved the plan here? Because it looks like there's already a town plan to expand to 2 million and then 2.5 million gallons per day at the, the treatment plant.
Well, I know that MDE has designed, or I'm sorry, has approved the design of the plan as far as internal to town staff. I don't know that answer.
Okay. So there, there's a plan that's been approved, not necessarily a vote by, I don't know if it would be the planning commission, the council, et cetera, right?
Correct. I, I don't know if that exists.
Sure. Um, I guess a question here would be 1.2 million on an average day. Obviously with rainfall, we're going well over the 1.5 million, you know, gallon per day capacity issue. I'm certainly not a water expert. Um, would it make sense to have a buffer like that built in? What I mean by that is, uh, you know, approving 2 million gallons, 2.0 million gallons per day, or whatever the plan ends up being in the future here in this document. Would it make sense to continue to try to operate like 1.5 million gallons when that rainfall comes in, we're better prepared to capture? Or is it industry standard to get as close to 2 million gallons as possible? And when it rains, well, we just know these SSOs are going to happen.
Right. So the plan is actually designed to accommodate a heavy rainfall event. So for a four hour period, the plant is designed to handle up to 3 million gallons over a four hour period. So that tank that we were talking about that wasn't working and was having to be operated manual, that's key to the ability to handle that surge when we get a heavy rainfall event.
And I apologize, I may have missed it. Uh, the 3 million gallons, that's with the new plan or where we're currently at?
That's correct.
So 1.5 million on a normal day, but for a four hour period, you're saying we can take upwards of 3 million gallons? Okay. Uh, that, that's great to know. I guess my question would be, and this, this may be better directed, you know, later, I understand if we don't have the answer today, is it seems like, if I'm not mistaken, the, the high watermark, for lack of a better term, is 2.82 million gallons per day. So why would we have an issue if 3 million is where we can operate for a four hour period? Seems like we're under that. Why, why would the wastewater treatment plant?
Because it was, it was like, if you ever read the Malcolm Gladwell book, where it talks about why a plane crashes and it takes 10,000 tiny little things to all go wrong at the same time? That, that's essentially what's happened here. So those three factors that CDM Smith identified, you had a number of factors that aligned that resulted in, in the SSOs, the sanitary sewage overflows. So we had mechanical failures on some of the equipment, that coupled with high rainfalls. Then we had to take one of the modules offline. So there's, there's basically four modules that are in operation during a normal day, and we had to take one of those off. So right off the bat, you're down to 75% capacity. So then you have mechanical failures. We have one, one module is offline, and then you have a heavy rainfall event. And the confluence of these three factors together is what has resulted primarily in the, the violations that we've seen. If you, if you look at the CDM report that was done, there's some really good graphs in there that graphically depict where the violations occurred and what was offline and the rainfall at the time. It really paints a picture that, that maybe my words can't articulate.
No, I think you did a good job. Just to speak it back, if you would, right? So essentially, rainfall event plus mod one being offline or mod two being offline, all these different projects coming together, a confluence of events is what occurred and caused these issues that we're kind of seeing here, right? This isn't, for lack of a better term, like a normal day, a normal rainfall. We're going to see this. This is three things, four things, all kind of happening at the same time.
Correct.
Okay. That, that makes sense.
I mean, just as an example, just a few weeks ago, we had a very significant rainfall event. I think we processed a million gallons in about five hours and, and 1.8 million in 12 hours, and the plant was able to handle it.
Yeah, that's, that's great. So, so 5 million gallons, obviously well over the 3 million that it's built for, for those type of events is good to hear. And obviously with, it sounds like all the mods back online and the, the plant operating correctly, it was able to handle that, right? So future looking, I would argue, pretty strong. Obviously, we had the issues in the past that we're addressing now. There, in the report itself, there, there's two findings that, again, residents were asking me about, April and May of 2025 specifically. They were wondering, are these the serious SSO events? Are these different in nature? Do you happen to know what happened in April of May of 2025? And with that, from an admin perspective, who was currently, or who was the town manager at that time period? And who was the plant manager at that time period?
I, I would have to go back and look at the MDE letters, which are in the packet. And I have here to see if there was an SSO identified. Hang on, I have it right here. In the MDE letters that were identified, there was not an SSO identified in May of 2025. There may have been one, but it wasn't reflected in the notifications that we.
Understood.
Okay. And then your question as to who was mayor, I.
Well, mayor, we know. Who was the town manager and who was the plant manager? Yep.
Uh, the plant manager was, was Kirk Parks, and I don't believe there was a town manager at the time.
Okay. And then final question for you. I'm tracking that there's some sort of meeting or walkthrough on July 31st. Is that correct?
We're expecting another visit from MDE.
Okay. That's it. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Go ahead. Councilman Sampson?
Yes, I don't have a question, just two statements. First, I'd like to thank, uh, town manager and assistant, uh, town manager for excellent presentation. I thought that was, uh, excellent. And second, I'd like to thank my fellow councilmen for, uh, voting to come forward with this, to make this actually public. I think that's important to note as we continue to push transparency and as especially water slash sewer is one of my big priorities. And so that's all I have.
Thank you very much. And any other comments on that?
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the agenda. 5.2, it's the CEO's stipend.
Mayor, council. This item is here at the request of a council member. They wanted to have a conversation about this. That's why we're doing this down here on the floor in the work session portion of your meeting this evening. I don't have a staff report for council at this time.
Before we proceed, uh, thank you for that. I'd like to make a formal statement and respectfully request that it be entered into the official minutes of tonight's meeting pursuant to sections 3-3 and 8-4 of our rules of procedure. A written copy will be provided to the town clerk. So as mayor, I believe it is important to address the public accusations regarding the stipend I received while serving as chief executive officer during the town manager vacancy. While I have remained silent out of respect for the process, it is now necessary to present the facts. When the town manager resigned, the council chose not to appoint the assistant town manager due to personal circumstances she was managing at the time. In accordance with our charter, the operational responsibilities of the town then devolved to the mayor. This was not without precedent. In the late 1980s, our former mayor also assumed the role of CEO during a managerial vacancy and received a stipend for those additional duties. In this instance, the idea of a stipend did not come from me. It originated with the council. They consulted with the assistant town manager, human resources, and the town attorney before lawfully approving and appropriating the stipend in a closed session held on September 3rd, 2024. I had no role in initiating, approving, or authorizing that stipend. I served solely as a non-participant recipient and carried out the duties assigned to me in good faith. I must also raise a critical question. What is the legal or ethical distinction between my situation and that of the former mayor who received a stipend under nearly identical circumstances? If his stipend was considered valid, by what standard would mine be treated differently? So in short, I did the work. I did not authorize the stipend. The town followed precedent established decades ago, and asking for repayment is improper, unfounded, and sets a concerning standard for future governance. Accordingly, and pursuant to section 6-5 of the council's rules of procedures, I move to table this discussion for the following reasons. First, on June 24th, 2025, legal counsel for councilman McCormick filed a notice of claim under the Maryland Local Government Tort Claim Act. The claim directly references the stipend, alleges improprieties in its authorizations, and signals intent to pursue legal action. Continuing with this discussion without our legal counsel present may place the town at legal risk, something we should aim to avoid. Second, as stated, I did not authorize the stipend. It was lawfully approved by the prior council, acting under its legislative authority and with advice from the town attorney. I was a third party beneficiary of that decision. None of the council members who approved the stipend are present this evening. None of the council members who approved the stipend are present this evening. And to my knowledge, none have been formally consulted about their their decision. The practice of revisiting and publicly challenging duly authorized actions of a previous council absent context or direct consultation establishes a very troubling precedent. If each new council reinterpret or undermines the legal decisions of its predecessors, we risk eroding the community that we we risk eroding the continuity, stability, and integrity of local governance. In this matter, if this matter is truly about transparency, ethics, and legality, then those raising concerns should begin by seeking clarification from the council that made the decision. Otherwise, this becomes less about accountability and more about personal attacks disguised as procedural concerns, which undermines the credibility of this body and the trust of the residents we serve. So there is a motion on the floor to table this decision until such a time where the town is represented by legal counsel and that the prior council has been formally consulted on their decision. Do I have a second? Thank you very much. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman McCormick?
Yeah, I think it's interesting that you use the phrase transparency and your concern for it. If you're gonna table this discussion, I'll have it have, you know, let it have its day in the public record. There's several comments that were made May twentieth by staff, the town attorney, yourself, that I think should be challenged, considering specific quotes from meetings held after September third and before the election of our council. That would be interesting. Like, I'm not challenging that a CEO shouldn't receive a stipend or isn't legally allowed to receive a stipend. I'm challenging that you serve as town manager, which your own quotes here, if you let me present them today, would back and prove. I think it's disgusting that Councilman Gutenberg seconded this, running for transparency. This is terrible. This is not a personal attack or animosity or anything like that. This is defending the people of La Plata. We've received, or I should say, I've received at least twenty five comments in the last twenty eight days about this. The folks deserve to hear what happened. I think if everything was above board, like you say, you should have no problem answering the questions I have for you in this discussion.
Thank you very much. So I have a motion that has been prob- properly seconded. Uh, Mr. Town Clerk?
Madam Mayor, is is it appropriate for, uh, other members to speak in the discussion portion?
Yes, it is.
All right, so. Wha- what I would like to say is that what what we're being asked to talk about here tonight, and the reason why I seconded your motion, that I didn't know was coming tonight, but what you made was a very valid point, and it it and it addresses some of the concerns I have that I want to talk about for a second. We are called here as a body to use our judgment to practice governance for the town of La Plata. We are not judges. That is a really important distinction that some members, uh, here don't always practice, in my opinion. There are specific legal authorities that are given to a municipal town council, which we are. Among those specific things that are given to this council to to be able to operate under by the state of Maryland are not the ability to pass judgment on crimes or legal issues. That is irrefutable. And what we're being asked to, over and over again, to come and have conversations in public session over are matters of litigation that should be handled appropriately in a venue that is given the purview to be judges. We are not judges, and it is in my judgment, whether you are disgusted or not by it, sir, that this council has to take not its personal ambitions as individuals, whether they are political or or personal in nature to to for notoriety or things like that. We're asked to use our judgment for the good of all residents of the town in the governance of the town. Your comments to me about why I ran and you're discussing discussed with what I just did in seconding a valid, well-articulated and reasonable motion, consideration by this council, was necessary and just further exposes the type of character that's dragging us through the mud for reasons that I don't see a clear benefit to the town, to the residents of the town, to the taxpayers of the town. If we take action in here that are outside, that is outside the purview of what we are legally allowed to do, which is we cannot pass judgment on matters of law, we expose the residents of the town of La Plata to costs that will involve legal services that the town we have to incur to defend the previous council, to defend the current council, and and how much money are some members of this council willing to pay to get some amount of money back? At my house, we don't make, uh, ten dollar investments to get a dollar back. This council sat and did a very deliberative, uh, a working session back in, uh, May. And we, as a council, unanimously, I might add, addressed to this issue and have put it to rest. So so I you you know, I I think that's all I have to say on this, uh, but, um, it I just want to reiterate, reiterate one last time. We are here to use our judgment for the benefit of the residents in the governance of the town. And I think we would all be more productive in that effort if we took down some of the 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 rhetoric that's going on in here over this issue uh, for personal gain, in my opinion, by the way, uh, and 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 focus more on the business of the residents of the town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comment?
Yes, Mayor James. Uh, thank you. Um, two comments. Um, Mayor James, you made a motion to table this, um, until when? I'm sorry, or?
Until, uh, the attorney can, um, be present.
You don't like the attorney present?
Well, we have to, because there is on, uh, June twenty fourth, council, uh, lead counsel for Councilman McCormick filed a notice of claim under the tort act and which signals intent to pursue legal action. And anytime we have a tort claim there, it is, uh, we should have legal representation.
Sure. Um, Councilman McCormick, are you okay with this item being tabled until our town attorney is present?
No, I'm not. Um, again, couple.
Well, I'm sorry, I had two comments. Thank you. Um, so, look, obviously, it's a sensitive subject for for some council members and and members of the community. Um, I think I said on May twentieth, I believe that was the date. The last council made a decision on September third of twenty twenty four, which I obviously disagree with that decision. I was not the governing body or a member of the governing body at. Thank you. Thank you. My mic died. Um, this this body made a decision on May twentieth to stop the stipend unanimously. And to make sure that we adhere to, um, you know, I think the good governance of the town and, you know, the word of governance is in the charter. I I know this council person don't have any more comments, uh, for this stipend. Um, and I would encourage the public, if you do have comments, to participate in in various avenues, whether it's an email to your council member. Come before this body is speak or send us in your comments. And, um, make sure we understand what is being asked of us or what you are seeking with this stipend. But I I don't have anything further to discuss. I don't know. Why is on the agenda, but? So I would like to say that, uh, first, um, on the issue of tabling it, I'm indifferent. I can go either way. Where I have a concern is, um, legal counsel. Our legal counsel is questionable, because that is at the center of this issue. It is the legal counsel who gave a legal opinion to the previous council that is causing all this uproar. And then to have that legal councilman, who is actually the center of the problem, then come back to debate a legal issue of which we already know where he stands, seems ridiculous to me. We already know where he stands because it's his opinion. And so I'm okay with tabling it, but tabling it for somebody who we know who's gonna try to defend himself, he's not an innocent bystander in this. And I have serious concerns about our legal counsel's judgment. The advice he gave, the reason we're here is because of the advice he gave. We can all disagree or agree on whether it was right or wrong, but I think we need to get back to the point is we have a questionable legal counsel, men. And I don't think he should be a part of any future discussions about this. I think that's rational and prudent, since it's his opinion.
Thank you. And just for a point of clarification, having counsel here is not for the stipend discussion. It is to protect the town because there is pending litigation. And we have to make sure that, as a body, we do not say something that could inflame this, uh, tort act that was filed against us on, or that was, we notified, were notified on June twenty fourth. So that is that, not for him to, whatever legal counsel, and it it doesn't, it's, we need an attorney here to make sure that the town is protected, um, for the intent to pursue legal action. All right, so we've all had our chance to speak. It's not a, uh, Councilman McCormick, that's out of line. It's not a debate. You've already had your statement. So, point.
To respond to questions that were brought up, like the count, like the question of Councilman Johnson's and the inference of my personal animosity or my personal gain, I guess, from this, which there is not. I know this is my mic is helping.
If you press the bottom of it, it should reset. At least, that's what mine did.
Yeah, so let me let me rephrase now that I'm back on the mic. Thank you, Councilman Sampson. I think you brought up some great questions. Uh, resolution that we passed for the rules of procedure, this is a debate. I'm allowed to respond to direct questions and personal comments that were made, and I just want to address those. So first, I think it's relatively straightforward. The the claim that there's a personal gain for this for myself, obviously, I disagree. What personal gain could there possibly be for this? What happened here, and it's interesting that Councilman Gutenberg uses the word judgment, but then claims we're not judges. The charter gives us specific powers as council members to police our own, and that's what I'm asking for here. This has nothing to do with criminality. This has nothing to do with going to court. This has nothing to do with the tort claim. These are two very different issues here. The tort claim I filed as a private resident, which I'm allowed to under the state of Maryland's laws. And this discussion is something I think that is appropriate right now, uh, because, in my opinion, we have an issue here where an ethical breach and a potential violation of the charter occurred. Because I agree with you, Madam Mayor, if you served as town CEO, yeah, there's a precedent set that you receive a stipend. I just don't think you served as town CEO because your own quotes state after September third that you were the town manager of the town. That's a direct violation that I think we should discuss. If it's as above board and normal as you stated that it was. Point of order. This should be, you know, this should be an easy conversation. Point of order. I, if there's a motion on the table, this sounds like debate on the issue, and what we are only here to talk about then is whether or not we're going to table this or not, are we not?
Thank you for the clarification. That is what I tried to say before, before I was, uh, cut off. So we have a motion on, uh, the floor that is to table this until such a time that we can have an attorney here. And that council, a pri- previous council has been formally, um, consulted, and we have a second. Mr. Town Clerk, would you please do a roll call if you are in favor of tabling this motion, I mean, tabling this, uh, uh, issue until such time those two um, procedures can be met? Please indicate by saying aye. If not, uh, nay.
Councilman Gutenberg?
Aye.
Councilman McCormick?
No.
Councilman Sampson?
No.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor James?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you very much. That brings us.
Point of order. And and with resolution, again, the rules of procedure, the minority is allowed to make a statement. I'd just like to make a statement. Mr. Town Clerk, if you don't mind, in accordance with our rules of procedure, can you make the same statement or write the same statement? Counsel, we provided a copy of it, et cetera, in accordance with our rules of procedure. Uh, I think that this right here just showed the difference in the level of transparency that certain council members and the mayor are committed to. I think that needs to be noted by our town residents. In my opinion, this is, this is, I mean, I don't want to say absurd, but this is absurd, and this is an issue that will come to light and needs to be discussed. Thank you.
All right. Moving on, town council's rules of procedure.
All right. Chuck Stevens again, town manager for the town of La Plata. On May thirteenth, twenty twenty five, the town council adopted resolution twenty five oh seven, which incorporated by reference the council of the town of La Plata rules of procedure dated August twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, amended October eighteenth, twenty twenty two, and further amended January fourteenth, twenty twenty three. At the time of adoption, council members expressed interest in having a broader conversation about potential updates and improvements to the rules of procedure to better reflect current practices and needs. The current rules of procedure serve as the framework for how the town council conducts its business, covering areas such as meeting procedures, public participation, voting protocols, committee structures, and general operating policies. The rules are designed to enable efficient transaction of business while protecting individual council members' rights and ensuring public transparency. Per section eight dash six of the current rules of procedure, amendments may be made in any regular meeting through an affirmative vote of a majority of a quorum of the town council, with amendments becoming effective upon adoption. The fiscal impact, this discussion item has no direct fiscal impact. Any future amendments to the rules of procedure would be implemented using existing staff resources and would not require additional funding. Strategic plan alignment. This initiative aligns with goal number one, good governance of the town's strategic plan, specifically supporting the objective to serve as responsible stewards of community trust in making decisions to maximize public service value to our residents. The discussion supports the strategic plan's core value of accountability by ensuring transparent decision-making processes and maintaining clear procedural guidelines that promote effective governance. The recommended action this evening is that staff recommends the town council engage in a discussion regarding potential updates to the rules of procedure and provide direction to the town manager on specific areas for staff to research and develop proposed amendments for future consideration. Following council discussion and direction, staff will will prepare specific proposed amendments for formal consideration at a future meeting. And then in your packets this evening, there are, there were a couple of documents. So first of all, you have the, uh, resolution twenty five oh seven, which is the current, uh, town council rules of procedure. So that's what we'll be consists considering modifying this evening during this discussion. There was also a red line document that highlighted proposed changes. Um, but because of the mechanics of how that document was created, um, and some of the the technology constraints that we faced, it was a little bit clunky. So staff also provided you with a clean copy of the proposed edits. So you have the clean copy of the existing rules, a clean copy of the proposed edits, and then a clunky-ish red line version to hopefully guide you through your conversation. There was also a request to have a, uh, uh, an opportunity to talk about ex parte communications. So there is an example provided, um, in your packet as well about, uh, one reporting mechanism for ex parte communications. That's all I have. Pinned in your questions.
All right. Thank you. I'll open it up for Ford before I say something.
All right. Um, yeah, thank you, um, Madam Mayor. Um, what what I'm, uh, when I go through the, uh, uh, the agenda package here tonight, um, that we have before us, um, I was reflecting on how that came to be and when that was made. Um, and there's a number of 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 edits in there in the the three documents. So what I'm, what I'm hoping and what I would recommend that that we consider doing here in this discussion is not
is not go line item by line item through every single thing in, in that document that was prepared by members of the commit, the, the, the council that are here today prior to our swearing in. What I hope is that we, we kind of target the things that, that are important to us at this point in time. I know from, from my own perspective, I now know through having gone through additional informational sessions and trainings on the Opens Meetings Act, I know there are things in that document that, that were recommendations prior to our swearing in that are not things that we would be even advised to do at this point. Um, also, I would like to note that with the, the onboarding of the new town manager, there had been new procedures that have been put in place for agenda items that I feel are, address many of the concerns that I personally had with the rules of procedures as I perceived them and, and observed as an outsider. And so the, those things also further limit the number of things I feel like I, I would need to discuss tonight. And so I would just ask that as we as a group go through that, go through this tonight, we focus on not the every single line item in that what is now an older document from, you know, our level of experience with the process at this point. And then that we focus on the things that, uh, that we feel are important.
Thank you very much. And well stated. And I know I received a phone call. I received three phone calls today about our meeting tonight. And it wasn't about anything, it wasn't wastewater treatment. It was on procedures and it was, the first phone call I received was, are you kidding me? There are so many grammatical mistakes. And first of all, it's rules of procedure, not rules and procedures. And these are very important little nuances because we are, that, we are using these as a reflection of what's in the charter and code. We can't change our rules of procedure to say from a ma, may to a shall because we'd have to change our code and our charter in order to reflect that on our rules and procedures. As a public body, I mean, every document that we upload, every document we produce, especially one that we are going to govern our own conduct by should reflect professionalism, clarity and careful thought. Boy, we can do so much better. Um, I looked at this, I, my red pen ran out of ink because there were so many inconsistencies. So where Councilman Gutenberg has made a wonderful suggestion that we look at some of the suggestions that you have already implemented, Mr. Stevens, that will help us conduct our meetings more efficiently. That's what we need to look at. And going line by line, um, that is not going to be a productive thing tonight because there are a lot of errors in this red line item. Any other, any comments?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. According to the charter, on the first article three, which governs the town council, the town council shall determine its own rules and procedure on how we operate. We, the, the charter allows language for a number of things. The rules govern this body on how we would do our order of business. The rules need to be addressed. Do we need to go line by line? No. But this body reserves the right to dictate how we operate as a body. As an example, the charter say the town council may appoint a town manager. This body could say until 2029, we shall appoint a town manager in his absence. And the rules will just govern how we do that. So this body decide the rules, not one individual council member, not two council members, the majority of the body. So for the public, the rules and procedure is a good governance tool to make sure that we stay orderly in our meetings and police ourselves to make sure that we are doing the business of the town and their residents. So do we need to go line item by line item? No. But these rules are the rules of procedure for the council of the town of La Plata. And I will reserve my later comments for new business from some prior comments that were made during this meeting.
Councilman McCormick, question?
Yes, thank you. Um, I think there's a consensus to just move forward and not go line item by line item. I don't know if we have to officially take a consensus or anything like that, but I agree. Uh, and for the record, these are proposed edits. The way that I understood the process was proposing a document, we talk about it. To your point, everybody's red pen can run out of ink. And then we say to Mr. Stevens, hey, this is what I would like in the document. He would come back with the new proposed document and we would vote yes or no. Uh, so I think it's a, you know, a little bit premature to say, hey, this was a final edit. There, there's a lot of errors in it. Of course there are. It's an edit. And to Councilman Gutenberg's point, a hundred percent spot on. I didn't take OMA training when I was a councilman elect and we were working through this document. Uh, there's a lot of things in here. I think the big one that we like to joke about is the cell phone rule that we took out. Obviously you cannot, you know, text or have electronic communication during a meeting. We learned that after taking the OMA, that would be something we wouldn't put in here. So again, it was a proposed edit. It was something that we were going to give to the town manager in accordance with, uh, the rules of procedure. You would later come back with, okay, these are all the left and right limits you gave me. Does this document look good? And then we would vote on it. So I think we have a consensus not to go item by item. I don't know if we have to like formally take a vote on that, but ready to have the discussion on the document itself.
Mr. Stevens, when the council comes to a, an agreement on the items moving forward, that we're going to present you with the suggestions or, or our edits.
Correct.
Then does it get vetted legally?
Yeah, we'll need to make sure that it's aligned with, with the charter and the code. We don't want to have any misalignment anywhere within our code. And so we don't want to adopt a resolution. I believe you adopt this by resolution. So we don't want to have any misalignment. So yes. I will listen. Michelle and I will listen to the conversation tonight. We'll hear areas where the council wants to make changes or improvements, edits to the, to the existing document. We'll capture that. We'll go back and draft the language. We'll staff it internally with the staff and vet it through, uh, legal counsel. We'll circulate that draft out to council and then we'll put it on a future agenda for, for consideration.
Okay. All right. So let's, let's roll up our sleeves. First, as I have already talked about is it's rules of procedure. So throughout this, it's, it was changed in the beginning, rules and procedure, rules of procedure. It is, the distinction matters. It refers specifically to formal guidelines that govern how we conduct our meetings and make decisions. So adding and is not the correct way of doing that. So I am going to kind of go, kind of go over some of the, or bypass some of the grammatical errors. And hopefully you'll be able to pick up that where it says, do not create substantive rights for thirds party. It should be third party, those kinds of grammar. Um, we can't.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I think we're all adults and we do a really good job at interpreting the language that's, that's present. I understand there are a lot of grammatical errors. I think we all recognize that. But if we can move forward with this with the most productive manner, um, I know I as one council member would appreciate that.
Thank you for that. But, um, when we're going through some of these nuances, a grammatical error, is that a may and a will? That's a, that's there. Adding, um, and instead of of, that changes the, it changes the nuances of that.
I understand.
It's got to be, if this is the document that you created and uploaded, then this was serious enough for you all.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, this is a draft document. Mr. Stevens, the town manager is going to listen to the discussion tonight and come back with a clean document to be presented before this body for consideration.
Fantastic. And that's the discussion we're having. To make sure it is given, that he has given, um, direction. All right.
Madam, if I could, just, just to try and get over this, this, uh, what, what I'm, what I think I was suggesting is, is that we, let's assume that, uh, 2507, which is the current rule of procedures, let's, let's just all accept that is the base rather than what's in the, the, the recommended changes in the, in the, in the agenda packet. And let's just with each other, let's nominate to, to Mr. Stevens through discussion items that we would like changed or adjusted based on today times and, and, and where we are to, to go forward. That, that way we don't have to. Okay, sure, sure. As an example, right? So, um, as an example, my concern or, or issue I would like to address with the existing rule of procedures would be to have a discussion on the ex parte rules. And we have, we also have a document in there that, that is a reference document that the town staff provided of, 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 of a, of a, a way to record, um, ex parte communication. And, um, I think that, uh, my recommendation would be, would be to ask for, and if we need to have more discussion here, but ask for town staff to propose, um, uh, appropriate and legally viable ex parte communication rules that would effectively allow us to introduce transparency to councils' interactions with developers, who in particular that have business with the council, similar to what we do with the planning commission today. Um, and so, and that, 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 that is, uh, that, that's the primary thing I would like to see us address with an update to the, uh, to the rule of procedures.
Thank you very much for that. To any discussion on ex parte communication and how we can incorporate that into our rules of procedure.
Sure, Madam Mayor. Um, I, I think it's what Councilor, Councilman Gutenberg stated. It should really be focused around, you know, development and land use, particularly. And, you know, there's an example for ex parte disclosure form, uh, from the Prince George's County council. Um, so we can incorporate or have a form as some type of mechanism for when any council member interact with a member of the community in regards to development that we're tracking it. Not, you know, that way no one can accuse anyone and not that anyone has been accused of anything. But, you know, to practice the transparency, especially as it correlates where you, you see a lot of comments about the development in town and the planning commission had an interesting session, uh, last week, I believe, uh, with the, the started language around APFO, which is an adequate public facility ordinance. So just to make sure that everyone is being unbiased in the approach as legislators for the town.
And if I could just take a second to let the public know what ex parte communication is. It means, it doesn't mean that you can't talk with the developers. D R Horton could be sitting right here and he is saying, in 10 years, I want to buy the, the hub and I would love to get your ideas of what to do. He doesn't have a pending matter in front of us on the hub that's future. So it doesn't mean that we can't talk, we're a small community. So ex parte communication refers to any direct or indirect communication about a pending matter. So it has to be a pending matter with a decision-making body, like the council, the Board of Appeals or ethics that happens outside of a public hearing and without parties present. Mr. Stevens, I'm going to give you the opportunity just to explain it a little bit more, but I think that is very important, a pending matter.
Sure. So council, um, as elected officials, you sit in a number, you wear a number of different hats when you sit on the dais. Sometimes it's legislative. Tonight you're going to consider some legislative matters. Sometimes you sit in a quasi judicial manner. That's where you're acting in a manner where it's very, very similar to a courtroom. Okay. So when you think about ex parte in that framework, I think it'll help, um, clear up a little bit of, of what the language the mayor just read is trying to get at. So when a matter is going to come before you and you're sitting in a quasi judicial role, you're going to adjudicate on that matter. You're going to make a go-no-go decision on a planning project, for example. That's why the, the planning commission already has this kind of language is because they do that all the time. That's what they do. Some of those planning projects might come before you. Okay? So if you are having a conversation with an individual who is part of a development team, it is a small community. And so you may have personal relationships with someone who works for a local developer and you're out to lunch and you're talking about, you know, the, the, the football game. You're talking about your kids, grandkids, whatever. That, that would never be ex parte communication, never. Okay? If that conversation starts talking about a planning project that is in the pipeline. Okay. There is an application submitted. There is a planning project in the process that may come before you. Think about the courtroom. If a judge was having a conversation with an attorney outside the courtroom about the case, the other attorney is going to say, wait a minute, I wasn't there. I don't know what was said. You can't talk about that. It's the same thing. It needs to happen. Anything that has to do with that planning project, any discussion around it has to occur in this room with the microphones on, with the camera on, with people in the gallery to hear what happens. Okay? So if a conversation happened at the coffee house about merits of the planning project, merits of the project, that would be ex parte communication. If that same developer came to any of you and wanted to complain about interaction with staff, I had a horrible experience with Stevens. He is the worst manager ever. Why did you ever hire him? Okay, that's fine. That's not discussing the merits of the planning project. That interaction with me could have occurred because the developer was in angry, frustrated because the planning project wasn't moving through process. So even though there was a planning project in the pipeline, they weren't discussing the merits of the planning project. They were talking about process. They were talking about me and my performance. That's okay. So does that, that help a little bit?
I think that's very clear. Thank you. It, it is more than just, it's about a project is what it is. It's about applications out there. So thank you. Um, any more on ex parte?
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Uh, speaking for myself, I do believe that ex parte in, in this form increases transparency. It sounds like we have a consensus to move forward with this. Is it okay if we instruct Mr. Stevens to come up with ex parte communication and put it in the new document?
To hear all.
Fair enough. Yep. But yeah.
Councilman Sampson, anything to add on that? All right. So, uh, Mr. Stevens, if you could get some language that would be appropriate for that, that would be wonderful. All right. I still take the lead?
Yeah, I would, I would pass the baton with that example. I, I don't have another specific issue that, that I wanted to, to lead.
Okay. Um, Councilman Sampson, do you have anything that you would like to see in the rules of procedure that needs to be updated?
The only thing that I would like to see, and it's under the, uh, section of quorum, is I would like for the town attorney to be present at all town council meetings barring, you know, some reason why he or she could not be there. I think that's important. That's the only, that's the only thing that I would like to see.
Okay. If we can have some discussion about that, that is going to be expensive. That is not, uh, in the past, and we're not talking about this attorney. We had an attorney for 30 years. It was basically on call. There are things that we don't need an attorney for, that when they're going through a meeting. There are things that we do. If we have that requirement, that is going to be a very hefty bill for our residents to put.
Yes, I, I agree with you. If going forward, our town attorney is not a employee of the town, which is a whole nother conversation. But I do think, and this is not to be the dead horse, and I'm not trying to be funny. Our just recent discussion could have been solved if an attorney was here. I mean, we just had an example of that. We were sitting here amongst ourselves and there's other things. Everything from, um, we have something coming up in this meeting about the loans, contracts, all that could be asked of an attorney. And so it could clear up things for us. And so, um, I'm not saying that it is something that should be done immediately. I'm just saying that I think that should be at least considered because I do think that we miss a lot of things by not having. I'm just saying that I think that should be at least considered because I do think that we miss a lot of things by not having a town attorney present. There's a lot of, there are a lot of things when you're talking about contracts, facilities, procurement. That come before the council that bleed over into different sections that an attorney's presence, even if it's only one question, would clear it right up. So that's the only thing I would add. And I'm not saying that that needs to be done immediately. I'm not saying that, I know that's a whole nother conversation on, you know, the status of the attorney. You know. Being contracted and caused, but I do think it should at least be considered because I do think we miss something by not having somebody who's actually. Uh, expert legal arena, arena being present. So that's all I have to say about that.
So Mr. Stevens, if it is, and we'll talk about this, but one of the things is maybe that is something that we can explore. The financial impact on that, the, um, if there is an attorney that we have that is not in-house. That, um, is, uh, you know, our town attorney that we have hired, if that is something that is feasible.
Absolutely. We can take that on. We've already started doing some of that analysis now, so we're not ready to, to discuss it this evening. But staff is already working on developing some of the figures. Considering in-house counsel versus the, the model that we use now.
Any other discussion on having an attorney at every meeting?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, one, if, if this still will be contracted, depending on what, what the council decide, then I agree with Councilman Sampson's. Addition to the, the, the rules. If we decide to go to in-house counsel, I think that's already addressed underneath of department heads or request of staff at a meeting.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, uh, Councilman Sampson. Interesting thought. Um, I know we talked a little bit about investment earlier. Just to kind of speak back your point, I think it would make sense if a, even if it were a contracted lawyer. To be present at these meetings, potentially some of the action that's happened following the action of those meetings could have been mitigated. And again, you almost do an upfront cost of having a lawyer present to ensure a legal action on the backend doesn't occur. So I do think that's something that, uh, you know, should, should definitely be explored, talked about. And I really appreciate you bringing that to the attention of, uh, of the council. So thanks for bringing it up. That was, that was an interesting thought. Yeah, I don't have comment on that.
So Mr. Stevens, just to reiterate, just to, uh, explore that option would be great. Thank you. All right, uh, Councilman Johnson, do you have anything that, um. Need added or changed or?
Sure. Thank you. Uh, two things, if you all could bear with me. Uh, we have, uh, closed meetings in our rules and procedures. Uh, Mr. Stevens, I know we had conversation before and you're, and over the last month, uh, regarding actions being taken in closed meetings. Um, I think that's a good practice that, um, this body should, should practice. We receive the updates and come out and make a decision in the public. Um, if that can be, uh, some type of language as we govern ourselves, uh, to be added to the rules and procedures. Of course, with the consensus of the remainder of the council.
That is, uh, I think the language, um, should reflect what Maryland Open Meetings Act says. And, uh, you're absolutely right. Anything that is any votes should not be taken in closed session. It needs to be brought into, uh, open session. So.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Yeah. So if it just kind of, I guess, tweaking the closed meeting, uh, section to reflect. That there are no votes in closed session, it's taken to open session before that.
If I can, Madam Mayor, this was just, just to clarify, because even the closed session form, uh, the Open Meetings Act for Maryland form. Says actions taken. I just want to be clear about words. So when we're talking about actions. For example, in the, in the, in the minutes of the close session on July 30th, July 1st, which is in your packet this evening. There were specific actions taken, but it was direction to staff. Counsel gave me direction to do certain things and I did that. I just want to be clear on the nuance of that because it can be very confusing. So what I'm hearing you say, and I understand you to be saying is that there will be no voting, there will be no formal actions taken in a closed session. We will always come out of closed session, back into this room, into this forum, build the public record and then take a formal vote. Giving direction to staff in closed session absolutely will continue to occur and will, and will need to occur. Okay.
That, that's very clear. Thank you.
Yes. That's, that is, yes. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Um, and then Madam Mayor, I think I have one more item. Can we have a discussion about how, uh, agenda items, uh, from this body is to occur? So two things, um, currently the rules allow for any council member to submit, um, an item to be on the agenda within seven days prior to the meeting. There has been some bumps in the road with that. Um, so, uh, Mr. Stevens, again, I know we had conversation about the potentially, uh, the potential of having a work session where. We sit like this and council members discuss amongst yourselves, uh, upcoming agenda items and there's a consensus going forward. And that way, you know, the public understand what's going to be coming on the agenda down the pipe, um, and everyone's aligned on what's going to be on the agenda, uh, each night. And that would potentially example, help eliminate possibly tabling any items, uh, before the body. Um, the second thing would be, I think there's language in the rules somewhere, uh, where it says that like a counselor's items is presented on the first meeting of the month. So if we, if you could talk to how that worked, uh, with your experience of, you know, as a group deciding how the agendas are going to be. Whatever the timeframe is, and maybe we don't need the language on the first month because everyone has a consensus on it will be on the agenda at some point in time in the coming days or coming weeks.
Unfortunately, I don't think my experience here is going to be beneficial to this group. It was, it was far more relaxed with the, uh, Board of Commissioners of only three. And so, um, I only had to counsel two. And so, and, and they were also full-time employees that, that their offices, they were at work from eight to five every day. So I would literally just walk office to office, get head nods, and then we would put things on the agenda. It was far more informal. A very, very different environment where all of you have jobs and you come here after your jobs and, and you're trying to govern this town. You know, on Tuesday evenings, whether it's two or three or four Tuesday evenings out of a month. And so the, the process is here. I understand why it's here and I understand why it needs to be a little more formal, um, than what I have. So I don't think that I'm going to be able to help you from my experience in this one. I'm just going to have to listen really hard to what you're trying to get at and, and then go back and try and draft language to, to satisfy your needs.
If I may, um, what has happened before? And it is, if each of us submit something to be on the agenda, it's going to be a little crazy. So it is, the reason why this was written back, whenever it was written to begin with is, so we come to, uh, and I, I know that, uh, Councilman Sampson has requests. To be put on an agenda for a future one. So what it would be is August 12th. That would be saying whatever it is, whatever the topic is. All right, council. Do you think that this is something that we should be discussing? Because it's more than just an agenda item. It is an agenda item that requires research and staff input. In order to make it a, a productive conversation. So that's why it was put at the first of the month. Now, that doesn't mean that there's just one that's put on the first of the month. It could be at one time, my goodness, uh, Michelle, didn't we have. A list of 17, um, requests from previous council saying, these are important to us. So then we look at it and say, okay, here is, let's just get it done. August 12th, well, look, how about we're scheduling. Right here, these for the next three months. So put it in an order that way. So there is an expectation that you are, what is important to you and your residents that you are serving, that it is addressed. But it is not one of those things when it's, when we say it's going to be on the, I, the agenda for August 12th. It's for discussion because staff needs direction. Does that clear it up just a little bit about the past of why that was done?
I appreciate the history. Sure. Um, my question was, Mr. Stevens, um, what I would like to see go forward with the will of the council, of course, is. The proposal that we had a conversation about of your last body, if we have a work session where everyone is involved in discussion on the agenda. Like you bring whatever it is, your notepad, and Councilman Johnson said, I want to talk about purple trees and all four of you say no. Then I know it's not on the agenda. Um, but I just don't, I think the way it's done now is we ask for like emails and to eliminate, you know. The, the resource to try to track down who sent what on July 27th for August 12th meeting. We are all aligned on what's going to be on our agenda to discuss with the public.
Okay. So I think I can piece this together. Um, and I think you're both saying the same thing, uh, but like ships in the night are passing. So, um, what, let's use the language that I have open in front of me and the example, uh, from Counselor Sampson, who sent an email this weekend that said, I would like to see this on a future agenda. Or actually you said specifically, I think August 12th, and we won't talk about the topic. We'll just say it was anyway. So what I would do is, and what I'm planning to do is to put that on the agenda using the same format of agenda that we're using tonight in this forum. So, um, this is what we're considering, and I don't remember how we titled it here, but this is our work session. We're calling this the Matters of Information, Matters of Information. And so this would be the forum where we would bring that forward. So I, I would ask, I, I like the provision of the seven business days just to give me time to, to get the agenda set and get it. Published properly and documented. We don't want to, uh, miss a, a notification. So, you know, within a week of a meeting, if I, I, if I were to get an email from any single. Member of this council that says, I would like to have something on the work session portion of the August 12th meeting. I could agendaize that if that's, if that's the direction you give me. And then we would come in here, Council Johnson, exactly what you said, purple trees it is. And we're going to talk about the purple trees. And then this council will decide, yes, it's, it's worth taking staff time to pursue. Or it's something that, that's of interest to the town to benefit the town as a whole or not, and give me direction then to go do the heavy lift on the staff work. Um, to, to come back to you in a formal meeting where you could then take legislative action.
So if I brought up, so Councilman Johnson brings up the purple trees, he should respond, be responsible for saying why. We're doing the purple trees and all of that. So it is on us if we're presenting something, we're not throwing an idea out, we're throwing out a complete package. This is why.
Correct.
Okay, good. Just to make that.
So just to make sure I'm clear and, and sorry, um, so we will still follow the format today of at least seven days in advance. Email to staff that we would like something on the agenda. It would be the first Tuesday or less. The agenda is open and you decide otherwise. Um, and then there'll be a matter of information. The council will have time to discuss dialogue and then potentially take a action to direct staff to do something. Okay. Second Tuesday, excuse me.
On first meeting.
Yes.
Yeah. So I want to make sure I'm clear because the, uh. I don't have a problem with that process, but what I'm concerned about is what I'm hearing though is this. Let's say Councilman Sampson. Eight months from now has a concern that's of great importance to him and his residents. But it's not important to anybody else. So everybody else could say, no, we don't want to discuss that. Is that how I'm hearing it?
No, I think what it would be.
Or let me rephrase. Can the majority of the council take off something that somebody wants?
They can, yes. They can say purple trees are not important. Then that would be a conversation that Council Johnson would have with Mr. Stevens going, okay, I know. The rest of the wards, it's, they don't have purple trees, so this isn't important to them. And I think this would be a one-on-one where they would get guidance on how to move forward or have that discussion. And not necessarily the will of the council. Mr. Stevens, is that?
Yeah. So I don't have a, like I said, I don't have a problem with the process, but I just want to make sure we're all clear. Because what I could see happening, not now, but in the future, is that something can get stalled because that was the problem that we had before. The problem that I personally had was not the seven days. It was not, um, you know. Or maybe we can do this next month, or maybe you, we should table this till next month, Councilman Sampson. So let's, let's do it three months from now. I'm fine with that. What I'm concerned about is, is that what we're saying is that the body decides what's important. In every single person's ward. And that is not, I don't agree with that. I think that is actually stripping away. Because like I said, what's important to somebody else may be an emergency to them. It's not an emergency to me. And so I don't, I don't like the idea. I would rather just say, and I'm just saying this, I'm just asking for consideration. Everything will be on the agenda, maybe just not at that time. So if Councilman Sampson wants purple trees. And we have other priorities, the will of the council could be, okay, we got it. We'll table that three months from now, four months from now. We got to get this other stuff done, not just, you know, work it off, work it with staff, whatever. Because I can see we're never get done and we're back to where we were at before where. Um, things were just being tabled or delayed and it's always the next meeting, the next meeting, the next meeting. So I'm not, I'm not.
And, and two, two items here, since, um, we've only, this body has only been together for two months. We did not have a town manager until June 16th. And so everything was being pushed back. If we had enacted this June 16th, our rules of procedures, which we adopted, it would have meant July 29th, which was our next meeting, would have been this discussion that we're having. So it looks like everything was pushed off, but really it's because we didn't have a town manager in part. The only other product, the only other, I guess, conversation we can have is if you feel that one thing is important to your. Residents, your ward, and it doesn't affect the other ones. I see five of us putting in a whole lot of work for the staff to do if each of us takes. What's most important to us and making staff do whatever we have to do. So there's going to be a conversation on how we can move forward on important issues. But they may be single important issues.
Yes, I, I agree with what you're saying in that vein. Like I said, I don't feel I should determine. What Councilman Johnson, what Councilman Gutenberg, or what Councilman McCormick wants to put on the agenda. We can have a discussion on when we should have that discussion, but I do not like the idea. I don't think I should have the authority to even vote on that thing. That should be, that's to me is more of a, now we're crossing over to the town manager. Town manager has priorities. These things have to get done.
Yeah.
We, within that context, say, this is important to us. And he says, okay, that's fine. It'll be on the agenda. It'll be 90 days out. I can then go tell my constituent 90 days from now.
Yeah. Yeah. I think the, the timeframe will be appropriate. It's that way for awareness.
I don't want the authority to vote on somebody else's, what's important to somebody else.
Yeah, let, let me give an example though. So I, I have felt the same, the same way, but, but what we're doing here is. We, we take actions as a body. That's sort of the point of this, right? That we have to collaborate with one another. And so an example I'll give you is, is if one member of the council decides that they want to discuss things that are of, um. Legally sensitive nature that we've received advice on. And that could expose the town to, to legal issues and they, they insist that it's on the agenda. If the body decides that that exposes the town to risk. The body should be able to decide that agenda item is not appropriate for an open session and should be handled in another way. Or, 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 or more obtuse, you know, example, somebody on the council could just decide they want to talk about a family trip they had. In, in, if we don't put some limitations on it and it would have to be allowed down the road. And so I think it is appropriate that we have discussions. I like the fact that we would have a discussion openly on what our agenda is. I've, I've seen examples of other municipalities that do that successfully. Um, and, and I, I, I like the ideas that, 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 that Councilman Johnson put forward on, on, um, you know, do, and, and you talked about it too. I, I think, I think that's good for us to, to actually have, uh, a debate about what is on the agendas.
If I could, Madam, Madam Mayor, quickly, I did, I just want to remind council though, that you're elected at large. And so I'm hearing a lot of representing your wards and I understand that because you live in your ward. And, and you probably campaigned hard in your wards and you got great ground support from your ward because they're, they were your friends, your family, your neighbors. But, but to, uh, Counselor Gutenberg's point, you, you act and serve as a body and you're elected at large. And sometimes you are going to be faced with, with making decisions, decisions and allocating scarce resources. And establishing priorities, and there are going to be haves and have-nots. It's just the nature of politics. And, and you're going to be asked at times to put the good of the town at large, sometimes even to the detriment of your own ward. That's why there's an odd number on councils.
Go ahead, Councilman McCormick.
Yeah, uh, so I apologize. I think we got a little bit away from the original proposal here. What I heard. What I heard at the front, let me know if I'm correct, is essentially at the special meeting of that month, everybody's going to come and propose, hey, the first meeting, this is what we would like on the agenda. We have that discussion at that working session, for lack of a better term, then we come to that. So Councilman Sampson, I guess I'll ask you this question. If you want to talk about, and the example we're using is Purple Trees, so we want to talk about Purple Trees. You would get the opportunity to explain, why do you want to talk about Purple Trees? So you do get it on the record. It is publicly televised. The townspeople can see it. And then we would determine, right, as a collective body, yes, we think this is a topic that's appropriate in whatever timeframe, or no, unfortunately, right now, this is not a priority. So you would still get the opportunity to talk about it on the record, debate it, whatever. But to Councilman Gutenberg's points, without that left and right limit, everything's permissible, and I don't think that's something that we certainly want. So did I categorize yourself correctly, Councilman Johnson, and did that quell your concerns, Councilman Sampson?
I think, no, you did. I just want to make sure that, I mean, we got to test and let you figure out how this is going to work for us with the meetings and the agenda requests. But I mean, I guess it's no different than the agenda we got in front of us, that we all vote no for something that's important. I just want to make sure there's a streamlined process that this body understands. If they submit something, here is the process we want to follow consistently. That's my only framework of why this even came to my mind.
And the process of debate should be debating the agenda item, not debating the topic.
Correct, because that, yeah.
Yeah. And then did that quell your concerns? Sorry.
I mean, I'm going to vote to support it. I just want to make sure that we fully realize that what we're saying is some things could be never fully discussed. I just want to make sure we're all aware of that.
Yeah.
But I'm going to vote for it, but I can see a situation, like I said, I can see a situation where something will just never get addressed.
And as Mr. Stevens said, yep, that could happen, absolutely. And just for a point of clarification, it's not a special meeting. It would be at our, what we're calling a work session, but it is entitled regular meeting. So a special meeting is something totally different. So I want to make sure that that's on the record. All right, so a consensus from council to make sure that we just kind of spruce up the agenda, the way to get that on the agenda? All right, do you have any questions, Mr. Stevens? Was it pretty clear? Crystal?
I can see me going back and listening to this section of the meeting again, but I think I've got it. Thanks.
Good. All right, and Counselman McCormick, do you have anything that needs to be on here?
Yeah, so I know we're now using Resolution 2507 as the baseline. So something that was brought up that hasn't officially been discussed in this conversation is I would like to discuss Councilman Johnson's proposal for the change from May to shall for a town manager. So I'll start with that discussion, see kind of where everybody falls, if there's a consensus there. Again, it is, I think Councilman Johnson brought up a good point in accordance with our charter. This would strictly operate for the rules of procedure that this current council operates under. And if we wanted to go a step further, and I don't know if we do or don't, we could take these steps to change the code, the charter, et cetera. But for right now, these rules would just be in place until a new rules of procedure were adopted.
Yeah, if I, Madam Mayor, if I may. Thank you. So it's a good example. So, you know, the Open Meetings Act is the baseline law or statutory authority governing how public bodies do business. We are strengthening how we do business by being transparent, and actions are being taken in the public. So, but you're allowed to take actions in a closed meeting, the way the law writes today. The town charter is the laws of the town of La Plata. Give us the authority to do various things. And one of those are appoint a town manager as the chief executive officer for the town. And currently, the charter says May. We can, like you said, we can get to a charter amendment, but these rules can strengthen the baseline of that charter. Don't deviate from it. Like, don't like, say no town manager at all, but we can strengthen the language to say, this body, if the position come vacant, shall appoint a town manager, whether that be an interim town manager or whatever you want to call it. Because the rule should be strengthening the laws of how we operate, if you will. That's my perception.
This is where I believe we really need legal opinion, because, and I don't care if it's for that one, if anything, we're changing from May to shall, and it goes against the charter or code, we need clarification, and I don't know, Mr. Stevens, if you have that clarification on there. If you're changing something, and I totally understand where you're coming from, Councilman Johnson saying that it's telling us we can manage the way we want to. We're policing ourselves, but we have a governing document, which is our charter and our code. So can we differentiate from that? Can we, you know, divide? I don't know. That, if that is the will of the council for you to explore that, then we can go with that if that is a sticking point on there.
Yeah.
I think it should be just all May's that have been identified to shall. What does the attorney say? What is the legal opinion on that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I may. So I think this is what we kind of discussed at the front, is the process is, we're going to give Mr. Stevens a left and right limit, and then he will consult with council to find out, hey, listen, I know you guys gave me a left and right limit here. Unfortunately, this does break the charter. I can't put it in the final document. Great, got it. I think we all kind of understand that. So, you know, I know we're still having a discussion on this before I move on to my other proposals, but I guess I'll ask, is there a consensus that Mr. Stevens explores this, right? The change specifically in the town manager portion of this from May to shall?
Councilman McCormick, I love your energy, but I am the chairman of the board, and for you to ask for a consensus that's out of order, that would be my job, which I take very seriously. But thank you for stepping in.
And Madam Mayor, yeah, and I hadn't spoken on that yet, so I did have something to say on that. This is my observation on that. I wonder if it's worth the town staff's time to do it for the following reason. A rule in this rule of procedures is something that we can change really easily if we didn't want to follow it. That might be better time spent for staff to work on what I think we're going to talk about in our Priorities Retreat, which is an amendment to the town charter that effectively changes that language in an enduring way. The town charter cannot be changed by the council with the blowing of the wind. It is quite an endeavor to change that, and if we had a vacancy in the town manager's position, even with this, if we made this rule change today, the council in one meeting could decide to go back to May language and then do what the charter currently says. So I don't see any harm in doing this. I just don't know that it's the most effective use of time. I very much think that La Plata has grown to a size where we really need a town manager. It isn't something we should just pull out of an elected body. We have grown to a size where we need individuals like you, sir. And so that's the thing I'll say to this group, is that I would like to see town staff focus on it as a charter amendment, rather than just a language update here.
Councilman McCormick, do you have anything else?
So on this topic, real quick, I think you bring up some really good points, Councilman Gutenberg. However, I do also think it's important to take the wins where we can. This is a document that we do oversee. The Councilman Johnson's point does police our own, and I think it's important to set the precedent. Listen, the townsfolk have been clear, at least in the communication with me. I'm making sure that I represent them. This is a document that we can at least give the left and right limit to Mr. Stevens tonight, to show that when we go into that discussion in September, when we're all sitting here with the priorities, I would argue it's a little bit easier to say, listen, we have the rules change. We're all aligned on this. We had a consensus at that time. Now let's move forward with the change to the charter, the charter amendment itself. So I would just say, I think it's a quick win for us to show the folks of La Plata, listen, your concerns are heard. This is something that a majority of folks that have talked to me want, so I just want to make sure it was presented. But you bring up an interesting point. When we get further, and I'll only speak for myself, I do think the charter amendment is the right way to go, just for tonight. This is something that we can change.
Do you think we need legal to weigh in on that, whether, because it does go against the charter? And I believe on May 20th, it was discussed, there was a statement that was made on that, but I'm not going to uphold that. There was a statement that was made about changing May to shall in the charter. But that was just, I hear from, if it is the consensus of the council to explore the legality of changing May to shall, where you have identified in here, and I think that's the first step before we actually commit to anything. But the one, Councilman Gutenberg, are you in favor of changing that one line item, if it is legal, from May to shall, in the rules of procedures for town manager?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so I'm looking for a consensus. Councilman McCormick?
Yes.
Councilman Sampson?
Yes.
And Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, so the legality is what's going to dictate that. All right, anything else on this subject?
If I could just say one thing.
I believe I still have the floor. It's only my first issue, so got a couple more, if that's okay.
As long as you stay within the 10 minutes.
Yep, so Section 3-6, Mr. Stevens, Mayor James. I guess I'll bring my intent first, and then see kind of if the rules already have this or not. Admittedly, I don't know. So I'm asking this question. Town manager, town attorney, town treasurer, serve at the pleasure of the council. And what I mean by this is, it is the right of the council to, with a majority opinion, potentially terminate those services, hire those services, et cetera. So I guess my intent would be in Section 3-6, where it says, town manager, town attorney, town treasurer, serving at the pleasure of the town council, just a clarification on what that means.
I do not have a Section 3-6 in the adopted rules.
To propose. Oh, do I have a different section? Sorry. I apologize. Am I on the wrong document?
So this is a section you want to add?
No, is it a section? It might be a section.
If it's highlighted, it's to propose edit.
Okay, yes. So I guess it would be a change. I apologize for that. So my first question before I get to the proposal, I apologize, is when, what does serve at the pleasure of council mean? I've seen that in the charter before. I've seen that in this rules of procedure before. What does that mean?
Okay, well, I'll use the manager position, because that's near and dear to me. So I often say that I serve at the pleasure of council. I tell people that, right? When they ask me what I do, I serve at the pleasure of the council. I implement the will of the council, okay? I work for a body. I told you all in my very first one-on-one meetings, I have five bosses, and that's the biggest challenge that I have every day when I come to work, okay? Because I have to communicate effectively with each of you, and I have to convince all of you that I'm doing a good job, right? Okay, and it's a challenge, but I serve at the will. So if this council is not satisfied with my performance, A, I hope that you're telling me along the way, so there's no surprises, but you don't have to either, okay? And you could just decide that you want to go a different direction and move on and replace me with a different town manager. Absolutely. So I serve at the will of the council, at the pleasure of the council.
Yes, thank you for that. Let me clarify real quick. I speak for myself. No concerns with the performance, just asking a holistic question there. That's how the rules are currently interpreted, correct, or written? No need for a change there?
That's how, excuse me, that's how the charter is written.
But it's not in the rules.
Correct.
So could we ask, I guess I'll ask, could we take that language straight from the charter and just put it in the rules of procedure in an appropriate area? Basically like a strengthening of the rules of procedure? And if it's not worth the time, it may not be worth the time. Yeah, if I may, I mean, I don't understand.
Well, if I may, it's actually in the rules now, town manager, is it?
Yeah, so that's.
So to your question, yes, we can. Do we need to?
Yes, so that's what I'm asking. Do we need to? I know we talked about it in the past as councilman-elect. I just want to make sure the topic is discussed. It may be a simple no. Okay, I think what we all agreed to is we were going to talk about our positions now and not live in the past.
Okay, great.
So I don't think we need to revisit it. All right, the no consensus there, so, or it sounds like no consensus there, so.
Does anybody have a burning desire to add that?
Nope.
No. And then the final thing that I have here, again, just for instance, under the public comment participation portion, admittedly, maybe outside the purview of the OMA, just for an intent purpose, right, a left and right limit. Is there a way that we can potentially move council comments to after the public comment? And what I mean by that is, not directly answering the questions of the residents, but I do think it may be worthwhile to discuss the placement of that in our rules of procedure, so that a resident doesn't come up here, speak for three minutes, get the head nod, and then walk away, and has to wait until the end of the meeting for the council to potentially address or bring up that issue.
Mr. Stevens, I'm going to let you handle that about debate, and since you have a lot of experience.
All right, and so, council, there's a reason why that exists, and we're not unique. And I'm glad that we're not unique in this. This is a very common practice. In fact, I would say most governments operate exactly the way that we do. We walk a fine line in government when we are in this room, because we need to conduct business. And we have, we are here to conduct business on behalf of this town and to serve our constituents and our residents. We have to balance that with protecting First Amendment rights, okay? So the courts have allowed and recognized that balancing act that we are under as governments. We are allowed to control time, place, and manner for how public comments are received, okay? But the key to keeping the town from being exposed to a lawsuit is we need to be consistent in the application of time, manner, and location, okay? We need to be consistent in how we allow public comment to occur. So there's a reason why the three-minute rules are, in fact, and I've had other bodies who have said, well, we need to give people 10 minutes or more. I advise against that, and sometimes I try it. I can tell you that it has never lasted, because at some point, it can become an interruption to your ability to govern. Because if you give too long of a period to speak, then people can line up and effectively filibuster your meeting, and you can never get to the work that you need to do on behalf of your residents. So that's one consideration. The other thing is the consistency. And so we never, ever, ever want to get away from how we practice it. So, and here's an easy example and a pitfall that is, it's just a minefield that's easy to walk into. Someone comes up to give public comment, and they're talking about the Fourth of July celebration that we had, which was a wonderful event, right? I was here. It was great. The kids were having a great time. It was unbelievable weather, and we let them go. And next thing you know, you look up at the clock, and it's five minutes. And we just let them go, and then they sit down. The next person comes up and says, hey, I want to talk to you about whatever, and it's not favorable. And we let them go, but then we're watching the clock and say, okay, I'm sorry, you're three minutes rep. Okay, that's a lawsuit waiting to happen, okay? We were not consistent in our application. The other slippery slope is the debate. You never want to get into a back and forth with someone on the podium that's giving public comment, because then you're opening yourselves up. We need to do that with everybody that comes up that wants to ask a question. So there's a reason why there's that separation, that cooling off period, I think, is maybe a way to think about it, is we hear the public comment, we thank people for their public comment, but we're here to conduct business, okay? We're balancing First Amendment rights with our necessity to conduct business for the townspeople. I hope that answers your question.
No, it did. Thank you very much for that explanation. I guess, just to clarify, my position was, all public comment go, then have the council comment up there. I hear your concern with the potential of inviting debate there, so understood, heard, get why that's not the rule. I'm okay to table that discussion or rescind by my idea.
Council, are you fine with not having that? He's.
Bring it up.
Okay.
Good to go.
All right, so any last comments? Fantastic. So this, very good discussion on that. Mr. Stevens, we gave you direction on several of them. Any questions for us?
I don't think so, but can I just read it back to you real quick? I've captured, ex parte communications, explore the possibility of having an attorney attend every meeting, have language that no formal action should be taken in a closed session, try to clean up the agenda requesting process, and then research and get a legal opinion on changing May to shall for appointing a town manager. Those are the action items that I have coming out of this discussion.
That sounds perfect. Thank you. All right, that leads us to Section 6 of our agenda, which is public comment. If anyone would like to speak, we ask that.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, if I may. At this point, I think we need to transition out of the work session and have you take your seats on the dais, where we're going to control the time here and the occasion of public comment.
Stand by. Can we take a recess? You can take, we're going to take a two-minute recess while we are going up to the dais up here. while we are going up to the dais up here. All right, now back to our regularly scheduled program here. We are at the portion of our agenda where we invite our public to speak. If you would like to speak this evening, we ask that you state your name, whether you are in the incorporated, if you live within the incorporated town limit, and please limit your conversation or your comments, I'm sorry, to three minutes. And we did have Michael that has signed up, so you are first on the floor. Come on down.
As you know, the.
Could you state your name? And I know for the record.
My name is Michael Madatic. I do not live in the town of La Plata. I live on the very, just the outskirts of La Plata, along the creek that exits from the sewage treatment facility. The sewage treatment plant is near and dear to my heart, but I don't see it working properly, okay, as we all do here at council. Mr. Stevens, your report was very thorough, a lot of information, way too much for me to absorb tonight. So I respectfully asked that I could get a copy of it, so I'm able to absorb it at a slower pace and understand everything that's in. Okay, so you had mentioned that the plant is licensed for 1.5 million gallons of sewage a day, okay? And you mentioned that you've had times where it could be as high as 2.98 billion gallons per day, okay, under heavy rain conditions and so forth, and you stated some parameters. What happens to that excess incoming sewage? I mean, am I allowed to ask questions?
Actually, it's just comments. So, and he will look, he will listen.
My understanding then, if that excess sewage coming into the plant goes to the storage tank, and is stored in the storage tank until it can be processed at a later time, right? If there is a second rain event following a full tank, there is no place for that sewage to go but down the stream. Now, I'm understanding it is processed through the UV sterilizers in the plant and then released down the stream. Okay, so it is of utmost importance to me to see the plant upgrade take place so that we can try to alleviate some of that concern. Now, I know there will always be rain events that will saturate the plant, but minimizing them is our intent here. I really have to ask a question. You proposed an upgrade to the plant. You did not state a time to take the upgrade, okay? Doing a major upgrade like that, I assume is going to take years. I don't know that, but I'm assuming that, okay? And I'm going to face the council here directly and make a statement that during this period of time, I think this council, the town of La Plata, it's in jeopardy for some serious violations because of that, okay? And it would be my recommendation to this council that you put a moratorium on all new sewage bookups, I guess they're called, until this is fixed. I think my three minutes is up.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? All right, next on our agenda is matters of council discussion. It's the USDA loan for sewer system project one.
All right, council, Chuck Stevens, town manager. I'll be giving you the staff report this evening. I'll be joined by the town treasurer, Karina Larson. So for background, the town of La Plata is proposing to issue two general obligation bonds to secure USDA loans for the financing of a major sewer infrastructure initiative known as Project One. This project includes construction of the Southwest Quadrant Regional Sewer Pumping Station, installation of a 24-inch gravity sewer line, and 12-inch water reuse piping, and upgrades of Module One for the treatment process at the La Plata wastewater treatment plant. These enhancements are intended to extend capacity, modernize infrastructure, and improve overall system performance. The ordinance authorizes the issuance of bonds totaling up to 7.562 million and outlines repayment terms, security provisions, and procedural requirements. The fiscal impact, the bonds will total a maximum principal of $7,562,000, with bond one at $4,842,000 at an interest rate of up to 1.75%, and bond two at $2,720,000 at up to 2.75%, each amortized over 40 years. Debt service is expected to be covered primarily by revenues from the town's major facility fee, with the town's full faith and credit and unlimited taxing power pledged as a secondary guarantee. Annual deposits of at least $49,787 into a short-lived asset reserve are also required. The structure is designed to minimize issuance costs and avoid burdening some interest rates, especially compared to commercial lending. Strategic plan alignment, specifically Goal Five Public Service Readiness, directly supports planning and developing systems and infrastructure needed to meet growing demand while supporting health, safety, and wellness of residents and natural resources. The project ensures adequate infrastructure capacity for current and future growth. Also, goal number one, good governance, demonstrates responsible stewardship of community trust by securing low-cost federal financing, those 1.75% and 2.75% interest rates, rather than more expensive commercial alternatives, maximizing public service value to residents. Additionally, goal three, economic prosperity, it enables strategic growth of the geographic property and economic tax base by ensuring adequate sewer infrastructure capacity to support residential, commercial, and industrial development as outlined in the comprehensive plan. The project also aligns with comprehensive plan goal number 10 for wastewater infrastructure upgrades to accommodate growth within the Chesapeake Bay restoration framework. Sustainability considerations, project one incorporates critical sustainability features, including the installation of water reuse piping and the implementation of more efficient wastewater treatment technology, that's the SNDN process that mod one just underwent. These improvements are expected to reduce environmental impact, enhance resilience, and extend the life of existing assets. It will be essential to maintain long-term upkeep, aligning with best practices in asset management and sustainability planning. There are no specific ADA considerations with this agenda item. The recommended action for council this evening is to adopt ordinance 25-07, authorizing the issuance of two general obligation bonds totaling up to $7,562,000 to secure USDA loans for project one sewer infrastructure improvements, including the Southwest Quadrant Regional Sewer Pumping Station, gravity sewer lines, water reuse piping, and wastewater treatment plant upgrades, with the town manager authorized to execute all necessary documents and agreements related to the bond issuance and USDA loan financing. Any questions for staff?
Thank you very much. That was very thorough, and I know that Ms. Larson is here to talk about the financing. Should there be any questions? I will open up the floor to council, Councilman McCormick, anything?
Yes, Madam Mayor. All right, Mr. Stevens, I know we talked about this earlier. Just to make sure that I have this Barney Stillett down for the folks that are listening in here that maybe don't have as much experience or know-how about this. So, right now, our wastewater treatment plant, 1.5 million gallons of water per day, can operate up to 3 million gallons for a four-hour period during a high rain event. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I will say, you know, again, we operate typically around 80% of that on a normal day. I did ask this earlier, understanding you may not have the information, but just to re-ask it, with current developments already on the books for La Plata, does a 1.5 million gallon per day wastewater treatment plant capacity meet the needs for those future developments that are already on the books?
So we're, I think council's aware, we're preparing a comprehensive water study for you. That'll be comprehensive, so it'll be water, it'll be the aquifer, the water infrastructure, the planned development, the future development, and then the wastewater, because it's all interconnected. So that will address that question for council.
Thank you. And just to break it down, right, so you mentioned a couple of different working pieces, but ultimately, if I have this correct, right, to do like an operational flow, for lack of a better term, with water, it's the wastewater treatment plant that's actually the bottleneck, meaning even if the other things can do 5 million, 6 million, 7 million gallons of water per day, the wastewater treatment plant is really the capacity number that matters, because if those are higher, the treatment plant still wouldn't be able to keep up with that. Is that correct?
Not exactly, not right now.
Okay.
Because our current water allocation permit from the state is 1.234 million gallons per day, which is below the 1.5 million gallons at the wastewater treatment plant. So right now, we can handle everything that's coming in, okay? Where we get upside down is when you look at all the development that has already been approved, that's not yet built, and that's where the water conversation comes in. So, like you said, the operational flow, it's all connected.
Yes, so this here gets us to 2 million gallons of water per day, correct? Or at least helps us fund the modifications to get to 2 million gallons of water per day.
So this loan right here, and I'm going to make sure that I'm getting this accurate. So the work that's described in this agenda item has already been completed and has been paid for using the major facilities fees balance, okay? What we are seeking to do here is think of this like a grant, a reimbursable grant, only it's not a grant, it's a loan. So if it were a grant, we would go out, we would do the work, we would submit invoices, have the work inspected, and then we would get reimbursed. Same concept here. We're trying to borrow money at very favorable interest rates to replenish the major facility fees, which will then allow us to do mod two.
Okay, and.
That's correct.
Okay.
We actually have all the mods that are eventually going to be done.
Okay, it's staff recommendation to approve this, correct?
Correct.
Okay. What if the council were to take a different action, meaning not approve it? Logical conclusion, where do you think that would end us up? So I hear it's a low interest rate. Essentially, it operates like a grant. I appreciate you explaining that the modifications have already been paid for. Let's say the council decides no. What do you see as the outcome of that action?
Funds in the major facilities to fund this. That means we're not going to replenish that and have that spread over a period of time for that life of that asset that we just upgraded.
Got it. So we paid for it upfront without getting this loan or something similar to it. It puts us at risk for the long term, which is why this is a 40-year kind of forward-looking proposal, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It spreads that cost over a larger period of time for this period of the asset.
Yep, instead of, you know, right up when we did the actual modification itself. Got it. That makes sense to me. Thank you very much.
And just one more note, that will also allow us to have enough cash on hand to do the subsequent modules. So if we don't replenish the reserve, then we're effectively done and capped at where we are now.
Got it. And then I heard about 50K per year is what's kind of going into this?
It's not per year. The, if you're talking about the short-lived asset, that's a reserve that we still hold. It's just, it's 49,000, something that we have to keep in there each year. It doesn't increase, it's 49,000, and that's to make sure we have the funds to maintain the asset.
Okay, so, you know, for 4 million and change, 2 million and change for the secondary upgrade here. The question that residents are going to ask, is this going to impact my taxes come FY '27? It sounds like it's coming from a different fund here, basically replenishing it. This is not a direct impact to resident taxes. Thank you.
Any other questions for the dates? Go ahead, Council Sampson.
Okay, I just had a couple of questions, just to make sure I understand. The major facility fee, and I should know this, I don't, so bear with me, is an account that we have set aside for these projects, correct?
It's a reserve within our general ledger that we collect fees, and that's where it goes, and it's used for capacity increase both for water and sewage.
And we stated earlier in this meeting tonight that we're also planning on, let me try to state this correctly, the major facility fee will pay for the WWTP. I got to, I know that's a paraphrasing, but is that?
That's exactly right, and that's what this is addressing. So the mod one work was already done. Seeking these loans and getting these loans at these favorable rates will give us the cash on hand to continue the improvements at the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, and so we are going to get this loan to continue upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant and additional upgrades for borrowing money to do that. And we are going to repay this loan how?
It's going to be repaid through the major facility. So basically, we're going to get this loan. We've already paid out the 7 million. We're going to get this loan, put the 7 million back into the major facility reserves, and then to pay this loan, it's going to come out of the major facility reserve over a 40-year period.
Okay, I'm not following up, but what I'm hearing, and I think most people understand, I'm just not following, we're going to borrow money, put it into an account, and then pull it out the account to pay the account we're borrowing for. Is that correct?
We're going to repay it from the same reserve. Now, right now, we're getting a 4.6% return on the investments that we currently have, and this is only a 1.75% and a 2.75%.
So we're going to make money on interest, and we're going to continue adding money via the major facility fees that are collected?
Okay, and so, so somewhere, I either heard or read in the packet, that growth would also help to pay for this, correct?
So when development is what pays for it, that's who pays the major facility. When a home is built, they have to pay the major facility fee. And the reason for that is because now we have to accommodate our infrastructure for that increased capacity. So as we go to mod two and do the renovations there to increase the capacity, it's coming from these funds that the developers paid into that reserve.
So, only have like two more questions. So then, should we wait until after we have the analysis on the infrastructure and the water and APFO? Because it seems like, if I'm hearing you correctly, that that growth that we need, we don't know what that growth is right now. that that growth that we need, we don't know what that growth is right now.
Correct.
I, I would recommend against that, because you've already got development that's been, been permitted and promised by this town. And so, that development is going to occur. We know that we need to increase the capacity at the wastewater treatment plant, and we also know that there's a, a shot clock running on this loan, and so there's a reason why it's here tonight.
That's USDA's goal, is to get it approved, because this has been out there for over four years, and they are to a point that they're going to remove the town's claim on the funds.
Okay, and then my last question, and thank you, thank you, I think you've cleared up some things for me. I just want to make sure, I know Councilman McCormick already asked this. So, if we did not take this loan, what is, I, I, I think you, you answered the question. What is the tangible result that will happen? Does that mean there are defaults? Does it mean we have to get revenue somewhere else? Does it mean taxes have to go up? There's B F P. What actually tangibly happens?
Well, it, it's already reduced our reserve balance in the major facility fees, and those are going to continue as the town grows. We also, the whole reason of getting this was because of the low interest rate. We, we generally are making more on the investments that we currently have with those monies that we are now not making on. Once we replenish it, those investments are going to go in there, and we pay the loan at these lower rates. It also spreads the cost of the life of the asset. You good?
I'll, I'll let it go. I still didn't hear a tangible, besides just basically we're going to deplete our reserves. That's the tangible result.
Well, it, it would also put future enhancements and capacity upgrades at the wastewater treatment planet risk, because we would lack the cash on hand to, to implement those enhancements. So, by, by replenishing the reserves, we're making more money on interest than we're paying out in interest. So, we're making money on somebody else's money. It's also giving us money in the account that we can go forward with the capacity increases and the remediation of, of the, the compliance issues that we discussed earlier this evening.
Got it.
So, that would be a very tangible outcome.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Johnson?
No.
Okay. Councilman Gudenberg?
No comment.
All right, so I am looking for a consensus to move this forward to legislation. Councilman Gutenberg? If you're okay to move this.
Yes, yes, yes.
Councilman McCormick?
Hi.
Councilman Sampson?
May.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
All right, and I am too. We'll see this on legislation in just a little bit. Thank you very much for a great conversation. Next on our agenda is a professional service agreement for legal services.
All right, once again, I'm Chuck Stevens, your town manager. I'm going to give you the staff report. The background is the town of La Plata is currently in a transition period regarding the town attorney position to ensure continuity of legal services essential to municipal operations. Staff has negotiated a limited scope legal services agreement with Jack A. Gallow Jr., Esquire, who will serve as special counsel during this transitional period. Mr. Gallow possesses extensive institutional knowledge of the town's legal matters, established professional relationships with town staff and officials, and demonstrated expertise in municipal law. This interim arrangement will provide the town with necessary legal support while staff conducts a comprehensive evaluation of long-term options for the town attorney position. The proposed agreement establishes clear parameters for legal services, including specific hourly rates, defined scope of work assigned by the town manager, and a six-month term that provides adequate time for the town to determine its permanent legal council structure. The fiscal impact. This initiative was not specifically funded during the current budget process, as the need arose, arose during the fiscal year. The agreement establishes a monthly engagement fee of five thousand dollars with additional charges based on actual work performed at three hundred dollars per hour for general legal services and four hundred and fifty dollars per hour for attendance at mayor and town council meetings. The maximum potential cost over the six-month term would be thirty thousand dollars in engagement fees with additional costs based on actual legal work required. Funds for this agreement will be allocated from existing legal services budget lines and reserves. This represents a cost-effective approach to maintaining essential legal services during the transition period while avoiding potential gaps in legal coverage that could expose the town to greater financial risk. Strategic plan alignment. This initiative directly supports goal number one, good governance, by ensuring the town maintains continuous access to professional legal counsel necessary for transparent decision-making processes and adherence to established procedures. The agreement supports the strategic plan's commitment to serve as responsible stewards of community trust in making decisions to maximize public service value to our residents. The initiative also aligns with goal number two, operational excellence, by ensuring staff have access to appropriate legal tools and expertise needed to perform their duties effectively. Maintaining consistent legal services supports the town's ability to consistently offer services that meet or exceed reasonable expectations. Your recommended action this evening is to adopt Resolution twenty-five twelve, authorizing the town manager to execute a limited scope legal services agreement with Jack A. Gallow Jr., Esquire, for a six-month term with monthly engagement fee of five thousand dollars and hourly rates of three hundred dollars for general legal services and four hundred and fifty dollars for mayor and town council meeting attendance.
All right, thank you very much. Before opening the Florida council discussion, I just want to take a few moments to outline the operational and governance considerations tied to this resolution. I think that you summed it up very well, Mr. Stevens, but I just want to make it crystal clear. As of August first, which is Friday, the town will be without an appointed attorney. The resolution presented this evening proposes, as mentioned, a six-month limited scope agreement with Mr. Jack Gallow to serve as special counsel. This agreement is intended to provide interim legal coverage and ensure continuity while council and staff evaluate long-term options for legal representation. Maintaining consistent legal support is essential to the proper functioning of municipal government. The town charter provides for the appointment of a town attorney to serve as the legal advisor to the town, and the town code requires legal counsel for matters involving the Board of Appeals, the Ethics Commission, and other bodies that perform quasi-judicial or enforcement duties. These functions cannot proceed effectively or lawfully without legal oversight. Moreover, we must consider ongoing legal matters currently being handled, as well as the potential for new litigation, including a claim recently signaled by a sitting council member. Under the Maryland Law of Local Government Tort Claim Act, the town must be prepared to respond appropriately to such claims to protect its legal and financial interests. We also recently discussed ongoing negotiations with M D E concerning the town's wastewater treatment plant. This is a matter of regulatory compliance and public infrastructure. Having legal counsel involved at this stage is both prudent and necessary. This proposed agreement is temporary, clearly scoped, and includes defined costs. The attorney already possesses the background knowledge needed to support these active and developing matters. If this agreement is not approved and no alternate arrangement is in place, the town faces a legal service gap that could increase operational and financial exposure. This is not consistent with responsible municipal management. As we move into the discussion, I ask council to consider the following. What is the plan for maintaining legal continuity beginning August first? Who is prepared to assume responsibility for pending matters with appropriate legal and institutional background? How will the Board of Appeals and Ethic Commission fulfill their statutory obligations without legal counsel? How will we ensure proper legal oversight in ongoing regulatory matters, including those involving M D E? And what are the risks if official actions are taken or challenged without legal review? Discontinuing legal services without a transition place, plan places the town at unnecessary risk. Our discussion tonight should focus on stability, legal continuity, and our duty to uphold the charter, code, and established procedures of the town. With that, I open the floor to council discussion. Council Gutenberg, do you have anything that you would like to add?
Um, I, I think, uh, I, I hope we as a, as a, a body can use this as a learning moment. I think the, the manner in which we are pursuing new legal counsel for the town of La Plata has, has resulted in the way that we're having to transition here. And this could have been done in a different way, but there are members of this council that have conducted themselves in a way that made this happen in a, in an unorderly manner, in my opinion. And residents should know that this is a tough pill to swallow, because the costs are quite high compared to what we were paying. We are paying short-term kind of pricing here that is significantly higher than the rates we were paying for the same attorney services in this short term. But we are left with no choice as a council, because we have to have, for the reasons that the mayor just stated, we have to have legal representation. I hope that in the future, we conduct ourselves in a way that's more responsible in pursuing these kinds of remedies to, to real issues that the town has to consider for its legal representation. It's just unfortunate that it, it's had to go as rapidly as this and that it has resulted in the, the fee structure that we're now really in a position that we cannot refute or turn down, because we are left with no alternative. This is our only path forward. And those are the things that I look at when I consider what we have to do here tonight to, to, to ensure coverage for the town of, for our legal services. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman McCormick. Do you have anything to add?
Yes, Mr. Stevens, how long is this contract for?
A period of six months.
What happens at the end of the six months? Do we have to review it? Is the?
No, it would, the way it's written right now is it would end at, at six months.
Okay, so essentially what this here is a six-month off-ramp, where we are, I would argue, exhibiting good governance by having the same individual hand off these issues to our potential future council. I understand it's a little bit of a tough swill, uh, pill to swallow with the increased prices. However, I think Councilman Sampson brought up some great points tonight, where he stated unfortunately, the town is facing a lot of legal issues because of the legal advice we have received. Uh, so this is a six-month, essentially, uh, you know, thank you for your service. Please continue to handle these manners in an appropriate way, and then hand them off to our future legal counsel. I think six months is an absolute appropriate period of time for legal counsel to do a handoff, so. I appreciate you bringing this to, to our attention. Again, it was the council and a consensus that, that did this, so. I think this is a, uh, I think this is a good thing for the town moving forward, getting a new legal counsel in six months. Thank you.
It was not a consensus. It was a majority. There is a difference.
Oh, okay, so a majority, even better.
Councilwoman Sampson?
So, I agree that we need counsel for six months. I do not understand the terms and conditions, which is mainly the role of the council to fund it. I don't understand, and I don't know if we're, if we're allowed to mention the actual amount. Are we allowed to mention the amounts?
Yeah.
So, it's attached to the agenda, right?
So, why are we paying four hundred and fifty dollars for somebody to show up when they didn't show up before? That bothers me. Now, some will say, well, they did show up, closed sessions, but I remember specifically, we had to beg and drag somebody to show up. I requested that myself. Four hundred and fifty dollars to show up. That, I mean, now I understand that, uh, you know, he's charging, the three hundred dollars an hour is a going rate. I have no problem with that. All right? I do have a problem with the four fifty to show up. I mean, I don't understand the difference between this three hundred dollars an hour and the four fifty to show up. The other problem in the body of the contract, and I know it's boilerplate language, he can refuse or reject anything that we want him to have within that six-month period. That bothers me, because if something new comes up, he could simply say, nope, I don't want to do it, and now we have another cost for other counsel. I'm going to, uh, hold my nose and vote for this, but I will say to me, this is the problem we had with poor legal counsel. That's me saying it, not the body. This is the problem that we have with this whole thing. And like I said, um, I will vote for it, but I will be hard pressed to explain, because I do not understand why we're paying somebody four fifty to show up and we're paying them three hundred dollars an hour, five thousand dollars a month, and they hardly did their job the first time. To me, this is a slap in the face.
Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I, I think the way that this was set up was very interesting tonight. Not what I expected going into, but to Councilman Sampson's point, Mr. Stevens, you had this conversation with Mr. Gallow on behalf of the town to get this contract, where it's the explanation that he will attend other boards and commissions meetings as requested at three hundred dollars an hour and attend a council session at four hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
So, can you restate the question for me, please, Councilman?
Sure. Current, uh, in this current contract, if you were to request the town, or in this term, special counsel to attend a, at this commission meeting, a planning commission meeting, or any other board meeting, it would be charged at three hundred dollars an hour, I believe. I read that correct?
I, I believe that's correct, yes.
If we request them to attend a, a council meeting, which is the body that's funding this contract, it is charged at four hundred and fifty dollars an hour. What is, yeah, are you able to provide an explanation for that?
No, those are the terms that were provided.
Those are the terms that were provided in front of me, yes. As the town manager, who on behalf of this council, execute agreements, any type of knowledge for that would be reasonable.
No, I would have to speculate, and I'm not going to speculate what motivated that term to be in the contract.
Did you give any parameters for this contract?
The parameters were that the, the town is in a position where we need to have legal counsel, as I detailed in the staff report, that effective on Friday, we were going to be without legal counsel. And so, we asked, uh, Mr. Gallow, uh, if he would consider extending services as special counsel for a period of time, and this is the, the, these are the terms that we came forward with for council to consider this evening.
Okay, you say "we," which means that it was an interactive dialogue for the terms, but it sounds like there was only one person with the terms. And I only ask this because, not the fact that we don't need legal counsel, definitely need legal counsel. You're asking the council tonight to approve a thirty thousand dollar engagement fee, potentially. And the term is "we" presented this, but it, the more I think about it, is a very interesting presentation to this body.
We were put in this position because certain members of council wanted a change, to go into a change a different direction, to go into a different direction. And that is within their right, but there was no planning as to what to do. When our last attorney was hired, our council, it took them eighteen months to find an attorney that could do the job for us, and we vetted them. And we had our previous attorney was here for thirty years. So, that was not taken lightly when council said, we need to go into a different direction and took our time, and we went through and looked at all the available attorneys and vetted them, and the council, as a decision, once an attorney was brought forward, got to interview them and get, interview him and decided that was the best for the town. We are put in this position because we did not take our time to think ten feet in front of us. So, while this contract is not one that, as it, as Councilman Gutenberg said, it's a hard pill to swallow, if we don't approve it, we are without counsel starting on Friday, which exposes the town, and we are here to protect the town, not to expose the town to that litigation that we have. So, with that, um, we are looking for a consensus in order to move this forward for legislative. So, you have another comment? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I just have, uh, two, two more things. One, is it possible to go back and say lower the four fifty? Because I have, I have. Because I have, the more I listen, the more I think about it, I said I was going to vote for it, but I, I'm wavering because I have serious heartburns about that.
I would say especially with no expectation, if you come before anybody, and this is the body that's funding the contract.
But you were one of the ones that wanted to end the contract, the terms, without a plan.
I don't, I don't think my exact words, Mr. Stevens, we had the conversation that I, that you asked me for a plan. Was it my job to come up with a plan, Madam Mayor? So the comments, I did vote, I gave a consensus, not a vote, to move forward with legal counsel. I did, sure. It is not your job or my job, or was asked of us at that time, what is your plan? It wasn't.
Well, it's stated in the charter.
This is not going to work out as a successful vote from my understanding tonight.
So the question I had was, can we go back and say, hey, we want you to lower the 450? Because right now, and I will be frank, since, you know, so everybody knows, I'm one of the ones who has serious doubts about the attorney. I still have serious doubts about attorney, and I'm still not sure, even if we do this, things will get any better. I've still not heard a single thing he has done tangibly, tangibly to benefit us. So my question is, and I'm not going to beat this dead horse, but I, this does agitate me because I have serious concerns about town attorney. So I do get agitated about this. Can we go back and ask him to lower the 450?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
It is incredible to me that we are going to try and do this in a matter of days. Friday is the deadline. We, we, where we have no more legal representation. If we try and direct the town manager to renegotiate at this point, I, I, I see it being extremely risky that he could renegotiate, if it's even acceptable, to the other party. And that this body could then reform and then, and, and, and take action to, to put it in place over the matter of $150 an hour over a short period of time. The amount of risk that we would put the town at and the costs that we could potentially incur by exposing us to those risks is astronomical when I think about how much money we are quibbling over, over what seemed to me, listening to this, as matters of pride on this issue. We, as a body, gave the town manager direction to do something in a majority. And how he has done it. And we have to manage through the consequences of what we ask the town manager to do. I will fall out of my chair with shock if we don't approve this tonight based on the conversations that have happened that led us to this point today. This is the path we chose. It's time to pay the bill, in my opinion. That's all.
Go ahead.
Couple of questions for you, Mr. Stevens. So first, what is Legit Services?
Legit Services?
Yes.
So there, there are employers, council, they, they handle employee issues primarily. And they're an insurance trust. I'm going to, local government insurance trust is the actual title. It's called Legit. And I'm looking to Michelle because she has way more experience and background with them than than I.
And they handle sewer backups for property accidents, things of that nature.
It would be fair to say that they wouldn't be able to, if we were to say no on this, take over some of the things that Mr. Golo had on his plate, correct?
No.
So they're two completely different entities. Okay, that makes sense to me. Thank you for that. Second, second, I think Councilman Gutenberg brings up some, some good points. Listen, spoiler alert, I was also one that voted to terminate the, the contract with the current town, town attorney. And maybe I'm in the minority here, but I thought this was a, the game plan. Mr. Stevens, how does a new town attorney get appointed or hired by the town?
So process wise, it's, it's not clearly spelled out in our code or charter. And please don't quote me on the language because I don't have it in front of me. I wasn't prepared to talk about that today.
Not, not, not what I'm trying, I'm now trying to get a gotcha.
It's, it's appointed by the mayor with the approval of council, I believe is the language.
So it sounds straightforward to me, and it sounds like we have a precedent of at least hiring three town managers. One 30 years ago, one however long this contract was, and the one that's coming up. Town attorney, sorry. So would it not make sense, right, that we have a six month ticking window here? But Madam Mayor, it sounds like the ball is kind of in your court too, with Mr. Stevens, potentially Ms. Minor, whoever else. If we get an outside agency to help us find that town attorney, and then we would all vote on it. So it could be $30,000, it could be 5,000. It just depends on how that process goes. So again, I would say, tough pill to swallow, I agree. Maybe I was in the minority. This seems like a relatively normal execution of a termination of an attorney contract from the businesses I've worked in, the military that I served in, and, and governments like this. So I think this is, I think this is normal. I understand that the price goes up, but again, the, the ball is kind of in the court of, it sounds like the town to find that new attorney and for us to, to vet and vote on them.
Can, I'm sorry, can I respond to that? Because there's a nuance to what, what, what was just described. If we just cut ties with the attorney on Friday, because that's the end of the contract, we have no bridge to get us through the very complex issues that we have all in, in closed session dealt with. And, and, and the, the idea of going to, and maybe I misunderstood you. Okay, so, so we're not trying to just do this without a transition is really not an option.
Correct. If I'm saying the six months is correct, then we're saying the same thing.
Can I, Madam Mayor, if I may? Yes, everyone make compelling points. I do have one question. The current contract states that any party may end the contract with 30 day notice. I don't believe there was a dirty, 30 day conversation. And the points made are very clear. But I believe the current contract says 30 days.
No, it does not, Counselor. It says on, on any date. There was a belief, and I shared that belief, that there was a 30 day notification period. I believe it was a statement that was made during one of the meetings. But when you look at the actual language of the contract, that, that language is absent. It says on any date.
I have one final comment.
Very well, thank you.
So my final comment is going to be similar to, to what Councilman Sampson said earlier. I'll explain my reasoning, holding my nose, is the concerns are legitimate. If we do not have a town attorney over this six month period, or however long it is, the town will be exposed to legal risk. However, the reason why I voted to, to move forward with this action is I do think the town needs a new town attorney. So I get it. It's a little bit of an increase to the cost for the general legal services compared to what he was providing before. Same thing with showing up to the town council meetings. I would make the, the comment that it's really no change if he doesn't show up to the town council meetings. Not here today, hasn't been at many of them. So I don't think that's going to be a cost that we occur. And again, based off how the process goes with Mayor James, Mr. Stevens, Ms. Minor, and whoever else is involved, this could be done in a matter of 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, up to six months. We don't know what it is. But if we're really worried about the cost, and again, to Councilman Gutenberg's point, I think the, the cost issue should be on not having an attorney versus having one. We could do this quicker, we could do this longer. It's, it's really up to, you know, our presiding officer to, to act on her duties, to find us a town manager and for us to vote on it.
To town clerk, we are looking for consensus to move this forward to legislation. If you are in favor, please indicate. I am not saying nay.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Can you say one more time?
We need a roll call.
Right for the attorney package.
Councilman Gutenberg?
Aye.
Councilman McCormick?
Aye.
Councilman Sampson? Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor James? And the motion passes.
All right, so that is just like would be up to resolution. You could read ordinance 25 dash 07. It's for introduction only.
Okay, this is your first reading. This is an ordinance concerning authorization of general obligation bonds evidencing USDA loans for sewer system project one.
You don't need to read the whole thing since it's attached.
I, correct, I, I was just going to read the title.
Okay.
If that's okay.
It's only for introduction, so we're fine. And next is resolution 25 dash 12 PSA for legal services for introduction and consideration of adoption.
Okay, a resolution concerning professional services agreement for legal services for the purpose of authorizing the town manager and to enter into a limited scope legal services agreement for the provision of legal services to the town of La Plata during the transition period for the town attorney position and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to accept with a resolution 25 dash 12 as presented?
Motion, Madam Mayor, motion to motion, I'm sorry, motion to adopt, I'm sorry, motion to adopt a resolution 25 dash 12 as presented?
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
Point of clarification, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
So this is voting on the actual piece of legislation or introduction on August 12th. I apologize for the. Okay, so we just had the, the discussion on it, correct? Now we're voting on the legislation. So I want, this is going to sound a little confusing to the folks out there. I'm, I'm leaning towards voting no on the actual legislation itself. I voted yes to move it forward to discussion under the assumption that it was going to be talked about on August 12th. That's my mistake. I'm still learning in this role. I have to own up to your mistakes there, but.
Point order?
Yeah.
Councilman McCormick, just for a point of clarification, excuse me. Are you speaking about the USDA bonds or the attorney?
I apologize, I'm talking about the USDA.
That was our first reading, which we will talk about August 12th.
That's, that's the question I was.
This is for the town attorney resolution.
I apologize. I'm very sorry, Mr. Stevens. It's been a long night. That's, that's my mistake. I rescind all my comments. Obviously, it's not dealing with the town attorney, correct?
All right, any other interesting discussion? All right, if, Mr. Town Clerk, we are looking for a vote. If you are in favor of adopting resolution, did we have a second?
We did.
We have a second, okay, sorry, it's been a long night. If you are in favor of, of adopting resolution 25 dash 12, please indicate by saying aye. If not, say nay. Mr. Town Clerk?
Councilman Gutenberg?
Aye.
Councilman McCormick?
Aye.
Councilman Sampson? Councilman Johnson? Mayor James? The motion passes.
All right, we're almost done. Woo, rally. We have now new business, town manager report.
All right, I, I do have a couple of reports. I apologize, it's going to take a second. I'm going to go quickly, though. I know all of you have been getting contacts from residents about the water and utility bills and the asterisks and the estimated usage. Just know, I'll omit most of the details here, just know that, that staff is working on this. I am engaged on this. Michelle and I met today with, with staff. There are some things broken procedurally and systematically. We're going to work through it. The magnitude of the problem is a little larger than what I expected. And so it's going to take us a little time, but if you receive any, any resident contacts concerned about it, please just direct them to me and I'll address it. We've talked a little bit about the water study task update. You'll recall on July 1st, council tasked me with developing that comprehensive presentation on the state of water resources. It's come up a couple of times in the meeting here tonight. Over the past month, we've made progress to, to get that study underway and presented for you. So we've established a detailed outline addressing all the key components you've requested, which is available water resources in the lower Patapsco aquifer, our current state permitted allocation for withdrawal from MDE, our existing infrastructure capacity for both water supply and wastewater treatment, and the interconnected nature of those systems. We've identified all of the information requirements needed for the analysis, assigned specific roles and responsibilities to staff members. And we've established realistic deadlines. I'm referring to it as the State of the Union for Water for the town of La Plata. We're targeting the September 9th meeting. That's two days before your retreat, so we think the timing on that is, is really attractive. So we want to give you that, that comprehensive look at water end to end so that you can make informed decisions about your priorities two days later when we have the retreat. We have a meeting scheduled with MDE next Monday to discuss our current permit and allocation and to build my situational awareness on the history of water in the town. And then additionally, we're working actively with Charles County on water, water related matters. I've been talking a lot tonight.
Here, I'll talk to them.
Excuse me. And the APFO, the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance. These, these topics, we plan to meet on August 28th with Charles County. Okay, and then finally, I have an update on the LEOPS application progress. We continue to make steady progress. On May 27th, this council took the step of approving the budget amendment to include the initial costs. I'm sorry, LEOPS is the law enforcement officers pension system. So LEOPS, Law Enforcement Officers Pension System. You took the action to approve the budget amendment to include initial costs for the LEOPS application and valuation process. One month later, on June 27th, we submitted our participating governmental unit entry application to the Maryland State Retirement and Pension System. The MSRPS, they acknowledged receipt of our application that same day. And then on July 21st, MSRPS requested from us job descriptions for our participating employees to verify their eligibility for the program. We responded immediately and completed that requirement the same day. So they currently have the job descriptions and they are under review. So the ball is back in their court and we are continuing to move that forward at council's direction. That's all I have for you this evening, pending your questions.
All right, any questions? All right, for this, we'll go with reports from mayor and council.
All right, thank you. Yeah, a couple of things to report this week on the Historic Preservation Commission. Two items there, just for, for folks' awareness and the, and the council's awareness. There's going to be a working session on August 8th with the Historic Planning Commission. And that is, they're going to be reviewing the, the work plan that town staff provided. They prepared and presented it at last week's meeting. And the, the, the Historic Preservation Commission decided to come together and have a working session to kind of look at that and, 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 and build consensus on prioritizing that and giving that feedback back to town staff. The other thing that, that came out of the Historic Preservation Commission meeting last week was the, the need to get on the council's agenda to discuss matters of future interior improvements, specifically to the historic firehouse. And to that end, Chairman Gilpin and myself will be working together to just pull some background on the work that has been done by the Historic Preservation Commission. Also, they worked together with the Beautify La Plata Commission and with the Charles County Garden Club on things that have been done on the exterior grounds of the historic firehouse and, and just the exterior of the building. So they want to pull together the history is the intent of that. And then we'll work with town staff to get an agenda item setup that's appropriate for the topic and, and for council's consideration of, you know, future plans for that facility. So I just wanted to put that on people's radar. And then the last thing, the planning commission, we had a, a, a working session also last week. And I'll, the, the topic of the working session was the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance. And it was a really good discussion. Actually, it started with a really good staff report that was put together by Director Dooley to, to frame the conversation. It was really excellent for all of us that, that participated in that discussion. And I, I think that if residents that are interested in this, that's a really good agenda item to read that, that, that really discusses like the, the issues and the considerations that you have to take. And, and I feel that, from my view, we had a really good conversation amongst all the members there with Director Dooley on that topic. And the output of that is going to be that Director Dooley is going to go back and work up some recommendations and a staff report for ultimately that will come to the town council at some future date that will present, you know, a, a path forward based on, on some of that discussion and other, and other conversations that will also potentially include costs because likely we will need external resources to, to move forward with that. So with, with that, I'll, that, that'll, that'll be where I finish it up tonight.
Sounds exciting things happening down there. Councilman McCormick?
Yeah, thank you. So it's been 28 days since we've met. So July 4th did happen during those 28 days. So July 4th did happen during those 28 days. Mr. Stevens alluded to it. Uh, but really well done by the town and the town staff that supported our vendors, everybody that came out to provide what was just an absolutely incredible event, the massive American flag, the, the, the water, the, the bubbles, everything that was provided there. I've heard nothing but great things about that day. So really well done to the staff. You guys are definitely recognized, so please let them know. Second, the splash pad is open at town hall. I've had a couple of questions about that. It's a ton of fun. I mean, it's a really good place to take, uh, you know, your kids, yourself, uh, check it out. It's a good time to cool off. It's about 100 billion degrees out there, so, uh, please take advantage of the amenities that, that La Plata does provide to its residents. Uh, third, Councilman Gutenberg, you touched on this, so all I'll say is, please go on YouTube and watch the planning commission meeting. Incredible discussion on the APFO, in my opinion, just speaking for myself. Uh, so I appreciate you bringing that up. The finance committee also had a meeting in the previous 28 days that I highly recommend everybody listen to as well there. Mr. Stevens, I believe you were invited to that meeting. We're able to talk, again, available on our YouTube page, uh, you know, Town of La Plata. Fourth, we did receive a report, um, and I just want to let the residents know. On the Stormwater Projects list, I'm gonna be following up with Mr. Stevens here in the next couple of days, just to get a little bit further clarification on it. Right now, it gives us a great starting point as to what's low, medium, and high priority. You probably heard the meetings on May 20th and May 27th about that discussion specifically at those meetings. I believe Mr. Stevens and the staff have done a great job of giving us the starting point to answering a lot of these questions. Just want to go a step further. So, Mr. Stevens, I'll be asking you a couple of questions there, but thank you very much, uh, for the foundation. Uh, fifth, I don't know if this is an appropriate place to bring it up, but, uh, another thing on top of, uh, LEOPS that we talked about on that May 27th meeting was a staff bonus that you did send us an update on. I don't know if it's appropriate to ask you if you want to share the update on that, or if we want to wait till a later meeting.
I serve at the pleasure of the council, so if you would like me to give an update on that, I'm, I'm.
I would love to hear it. I speak just for myself.
Okay, so, um, the staff met on this maybe two weeks ago. We, we developed parameters. It was, it was a meeting that I was on even a, a town employee yet. So I went back and watched the video, saw that I was tasked, once I came to work, uh, to implement a bonus program for the staff. And so got together with the staff, uh, we've done that. Um, I detailed you the, the parameters around that bonus program. For, for the majority of town employees, full-time employees, it'll be a $1,200 bonus less their individual taxes. So everybody has a different tax rate. It'll be less their taxes. Part-time employees, I believe the ratio is set by, I don't remember the calculation. It's in the email I sent you, but it will be, it'll be commensurate with the number of hours that they work.
Yep.
Um, so it will be something less than $1,200, less their taxes.
Yeah.
And, and they should see that, um, on the pay period ending on Thursday. So the checks that go out in 48 hours, they should see that.
I speak for myself. Thank you very much for executing on that quickly. Uh, I know that I would be appreciative if I were a town employee, uh, receiving that, that bonus in a relatively quick time since you've taken over. So thank you. That was, that was, in my opinion, a huge win. We talked about the, the farmer's market today. Uh, please get out and check it out. We got a pretty cool farmer's market. Uh, glad that we did the proclamation for Farmer's Market Week. And finally, because this is new business, I can introduce topics that I like to talk about with Mr. Stevens and get, you know, once we work through the draft, uh, what I like to do, but, you know, we talked a lot about what powers the council does and doesn't have, and one of the powers we do have is censorship. And I will definitely be exploring that for the actions that occurred, you know, from September 3rd up until May 20th or 27th. I don't remember exactly which meeting we, uh, we removed the stipend. So that is a power we have. Uh, that's something I'll be discussing. I just want to put it on the radar of everybody. Thank you.
Councilman Sampson?
Nope, I have nothing at this time.
All right, Councilman Johnson?
Yes, thank you. I have a few things. Uh, one, thank you to Mr. Matic for providing public comment. I think he left for the evening. Appreciate your, your comments and concerns with the wastewater treatment plant. Um, a couple of updates for the council. Um, on July 14th, I had the opportunity to attend, uh, the Public Safety Cadet and Explorer Summer Showdown Competition at Salisbury University, hosted by the Potomac Boundaries Advisory Association, uh, to open their competition as a keynote speaker, um, as I was in that program. So that was really good to be on the other end of the, I don't know what you call it, auditorium. I also had the opportunity on just July 16th to attend the Eland Station, uh, condo association meeting, um, as a meet and greet, um, heard their concerns and forward them over to our town manager. Uh, the NICS Park and Recs Commission meeting is on August 13th. And on August 12th, I would be virtual as I'll be out of the area for our town council meeting.
Thank you. And, uh, for me, coming up, uh, this Friday, we have our concert, our summer night concerts. The weather has been a little iffy with us, and I'm sad that we did not get to have the military band last Friday, but I am confident that Pork Donut, and they're an amazing band, will be here on Friday, August 1st. August 8th, we will have the US Navy Cruisers. We only have four more concerts, and then our series ends. We have only five more kids' shows. Um, coming up August 5th is the Blue Sky Puppets. On the 7th is the Method Jim Zumba, and on the 14th is the Silent Disco Dance, which proves to be really interesting on that. And then before we adjourn, I'd like to make a final statement and request that it be entered into our official record of tonight's meeting pursuant to sections 3 dash 3 and 8 dash 4 of our rules of procedure. A written copy will be provided to the town clerk. So as we have heard over the past several weeks, the topic of the stipend I received while performing the duties of CEO during the town manager vacancy has overshadowed the critical work we were elected to do. It has become a distraction, not just to me, but to the business of, of this council, our staff, and our community. Important policy discussions, infrastructure priorities, and public services have been delayed or sidelined while this issue dominates our agenda. Let me restate clearly and unequivocally, the stipend was lawfully authorized and appropriated by the prior council on September 3rd, 2024. I did not request it. I did not initiate it, and I did not approve, I did not vote to approve it. I was assigned duties by that council and carried them out in good faith, consistent with our charter and longstanding precedent. This is not the first time a Town of La Plata mayor has received a stipend while fulfilling those responsibilities. What made that action appropriate, but mine suddenly improper? That question deserves serious consideration, and it must be asked without political motive or personal bias. Because Council, Councilman McCormick has initiated a legal claim under the Maryland Local Government Tort Claims Act regarding this matter, I have chosen my words carefully. I speak only the facts and not speculation, so as not to compromise the town's legal position. This council must reflect on the precedent we are setting. If every action taken by a previous elected body is later questioned, reinterpreted, or politicized without full context, we jeopardize the integrity and continuity of local governance. As we move forward, I ask that we return our focus to the work that matters most, delivering results for the residents we serve. That is why we reflect. Thank you, and I move to adjourn this meeting at 20:58, 8:58. Thank you.